Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
I know. It's true. Never know.
Same thing.
Yeah, yeah. How do you have your mind?
Just asking.
I'll be in town for three more years, sure, just not on this side of the table.
Why did you tell me all this like Belichick or something?
No, no. Definitely not having that thought process right now. Yeah. All set? All right, good evening, everyone, welcome to the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. We'll start with both leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here we have a new appointment of Terry Knowles as an alternate to the trustees of the trust funds. Don't think she's, don't see her here.
I don't think, I don't think she was coming.
No, but I think probably pretty much everybody knows her, we've all met her.
Yeah.
At least once or twice. Uh, they're, they're full with their appointments right now, right, as far as their full members?
Yeah, those are elected.
But, oh, that's right, yeah, but they're, um, but they're.
There's about four to three.
Right, I knew that, so, she would be the only trustee, the alternate?
Actually, Tom's an alternate.
Oh, you're an alternate as well, okay. How quickly I forget. All right, any questions, comments, concerns?
No concerns.
No concerns.
I don't either, all right, I'll move that we appoint Terry Knowles as an alternate to the trustees of the trust funds, is that three year? I think it is, isn't it?
Three years.
I think it's three years, isn't it, Tom?
The library does a year at a time. I don't remember, the library does a year at a time, I'm just saying.
All right, well, if it's more than a year, you guys see her next year.
How long is Tom on? Tom, were you on for one year or three?
The alternate.
Alternate for trustees of trust funds.
Yeah, I don't know, I thought it was three and then somebody told me I had to re-put it after one, so.
Right, I think it's one.
Maybe we do one just because it's an elected, all right, so, all right. Appoint Terry Knowles as an alternate to trustees of trust funds, it's a term of one year, is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, all of us in favor?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do the manifest next. Uh, vote to order the treasurer to sign payroll accounts payable checks dated January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, ooh, twenty twenty-four. As including the following manifest, the payroll manifest is seventy-nine thousand, one hundred ninety-one dollars, sixty-one cents weekly payroll. Twenty twenty-three accounts payable manifest is twenty-seven thousand, forty-four dollars, eighty-one cents and twenty-four accounts payable of twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars, seventy-three cents for a total of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, forty-seven dollars, fifteen cents, is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, in discussion, all of us in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Aye.
Move on to the minutes. Of eleven twenty-seven.
I have four notes on the twenty-seven.
Okay.
Line forty-one, I think it should say East Street property instead of East property.
Yep. Or is it East, Texas?
Should be East Road.
Yeah, yep, yep.
And then above that, I think it said East Street then.
Yep.
Because I was copying one of it, so, East Road, East Road.
Yep.
Uh, forty-nine fifty, it said purchase in sale, I believe that should be purchase in sale.
Yeah, yep.
And then I'm down on one thirty-eight.
Anybody else in between?
What number is he next?
One thirty-eight. Uh, two things on that line, ammunition cost of more than one of something, and I did not go back and look at the video to see what that fraction is, but.
Third, wasn't it?
I don't remember, but.
I think it was a third.
Just whoever's making the edit, if I could check that, and then, um, because shortly after that, BWC is used, um, I think it would be helpful to, on line one thirty-eight where it says body cameras, I think it'd be good to say body worn cameras, parentheses, BWCs, yeah. That's all I had, November twenty-seven.
Did you come up with a third, is that what you said? One-third?
No, I wasn't sure.
Not sure.
Oh, no, it was the, 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 we didn't know what the amount was, what the percentage was.
Increased in the cost?
Yeah, because it said, it's, it said, um, what line was that again, one thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Yeah, it said, it just said one over presented line. I think it was a third, but might just have to check on that. Anybody else for the twenty-seventh? I'll entertain motion.
So you want me to find it, is what you're asking me to do?
I'd ju- I'd just say fill it in. When, when, when we can.
Yep.
Uh, I'll move that we accept the minutes of November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, are all of us in favor?
Yes, yes.
I'm gonna be saying it wasn't there. December fourth.
Got two things. On line fifty-four, it says Chair Hippler appointed, but that should say Chair Hippler motioned to appoint.
Okay. Or move to appoint.
Sure, whatever is consistent.
Yep, yeah, I think it's, that's consistent. All right. Anybody else on the first couple pages?
Got one oh-two, other ones, whatever page it is.
That's, uh, page three. Okay, good.
Uh, it's just simple, RSA three, ten, A, colon, space, forty-two, and I don't think there should be a space there, well, I know there shouldn't.
Right.
That's all I had for December fourth.
Anybody else?
Uh, two eighty-three.
That will be on page six.
Page six. Two eighty-three, um, fire chief position, singular. And on two eighty-seven, we agreed to remove that, I believe it is removed on following reports, just wanted to note that during that meeting, we agreed to remove it.
So maybe just after that, just say BOS decided to remove?
Yeah.
Anything else? I'll move that we accept the December fourth, twenty twenty-three, meeting minutes as amended, is there a second? Moving second, are all of us in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yeah, that's as far as I got.
Oh.
In my minutes review.
Okay.
Not that I need to hold everybody up.
Anybody get through them all?
No.
Okay. All right, so we don't want table the next.
I did get through twelve, eleven, but if no one else did.
Okay. All right, we want table next three, I take it then, eleven, twenty-eight, eleven eighteen, twenty-seven, okay. I wasted all five minutes.
I did, I did write down a few things we could talk about.
Oh, lovely.
Before seven P M.
As far as?
Just.
In general?
Just, yeah, things, not to lose sight of.
Okay.
Nothing new, really.
Yeah, all right.
Uh, we had talked about February reviewing sealed minutes, so just try and nail that down on the calendar if we can, so we don't slip into February and suddenly it's already packed up.
What, what was that, so?
Uh, we had talked about review, reviewing the sealed minutes of twenty twenty-three, or like this last term, um, in February, so just how are we gonna, like, can we pick a date for that?
I thought we had.
Have we?
Like, February twenty-sixth as well.
Even better.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in stone, there you go, yeah.
Okay, um, and then how are we gonna move forward, we talked about RFPs for town council, engineer, and I think a couple of other things, uh, on January first, and it's now, of course, the fifteenth, a couple of weeks later, so how are we gonna move forward on those? It's gonna involve writing RFPs, uh, all that.
I don't know how we'd, I, I guess we would wanna see, I'm sure we bid those, a couple of those before, we probably wanna see what we have on file, um, obviously it's been a long time, so they could be dated, obviously, but.
It was for legal, what else did you say?
At least engineer.
Oh, the town engineer?
Yeah, I thought we had.
Yeah, we were.
We had that list.
Yeah.
Of things that had expired, like contracts that had expired.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, and I think lawns is next year, and there's a couple others, a couple others are really come to point next year, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Extend forestry for one year.
Yep.
Right, exactly, yeah. Okay, so that was the, uh, expiring contracts.
Yeah, and if the next. There's probably an old engineering one around, but I don't know that we've ever put legal out. So for twenty-four, you have IT, custodial, lawn care, dispatch.
And those are ending sometime in the year or at the end of this year?
And you have, um, hauling, the, hauling your metal trash paper.
They all end in, in calendar year twenty-four, right?
Twenty-four.
Just, but sometime, like, spread throughout the year?
Um, I know the lawn care is done in November, it expires November of twenty-four, the other ones, I, I don't remember, the hauling is probably year end.
Yeah, I think, I remember that being year-end-ish.
The other ones, um, custodial, I believe is the same as the dispatch, uh, I mean, the same as lawn care, um, IT, I believe runs to the end of the year, so I think they're all at the end.
So what else is in that bucket with town council and engineer?
So I have IT, custodial, lawn care, police dispatch.
Those are, you said that those are the ones expiring sometime in twenty-four.
Yeah, I don't know that we've ever.
Are there some that either have never been put out or have already expired?
Correct, oh, the ones that already expired is, um, uniforms for police, highway, transfer station, um. Legal isn't on this list because we've never put it out to bid.
So, so basically the overdue is our uniforms and legal. What's that?
Highways issue.
Okay.
It was confusing.
All right, so it's twenty-four.
Yep.
So that'd be highway DPW, right?
Um, highway transfer, um, yeah, and then there's a police cruiser outfit for twenty-three, there's a library roof repair, which we already did, um, and then the ambulance purchase runs twenty-three, twenty-four, because we're still waiting.
Well, usually our next step is, uh, if you can, if you get Naomi to do the listserv.
I think that would be a good start, if there's a, yeah, please get some other ideas.
Yeah, for those.
I'm sure that there's gotta be one at least out there for Leo Council, one or, one or ten, yeah.
And then we'll have our old engineer one and same question.
Right.
What are other towns looking at?
Yeah, ain't gonna hurt, that's for sure.
And then I wrote down that we should let people know that our building inspector put in his resignation.
Yep.
So nobody's blindsided by that. We're looking at, uh, how to move forward there. Um, and then I wrote, what are we doing about, and didn't finish the sentence, so.
Oh, there you go, must fall asleep.
Yeah.
On, on the building inspector, I do know that we have a, what do you call it, mutual aid there, Gulfstown, I believe?
Yep, I've sent out an email, but I don't know who was working today and who wasn't, and I never got a reply.
All right, before we actually pull the, go on that, I'd like to talk about it as a board, assuming they say yes, we'll come back and talk about it.
As far as?
Um, using them.
Like, you don't wanna use them?
No, I just wanna talk about maybe some things, you know, from the standpoint of.
Oh, some like ground rules almost, okay, all right.
But now, I'm just gonna say the next time you meet will be after the building inspector's left.
Right.
So what are we gonna do for next week?
Right.
So the building inspector leaves at noon time on Friday. We don't meet again till Monday. So I can direct him not to schedule anything for Monday, but Monday would have been a normal day.
I would say probably don't schedule anything.
Okay, I'm just, I just want everybody to know.
Well, unless, Naomi, you may hear back from them?
I can, but if you wanna talk about it, I don't have any.
Specifically, what I wanna talk about is, when are we going to talk about the building permits and the stamped plans? I would like to have that.
Yeah.
Done before we get somebody else in or re-in and provide immediate direction on what we're gonna do. So that's my concern.
Talk about it for fifteen minutes?
Yeah, I didn't get nothing else, was that, was that the last thing you had?
There was individuals last week here for that, that were told it was gonna be, you know, obviously misinformation, but, so, if we have time to talk about it, it'd be.
Yeah, not putting it on the agenda, maybe.
Last week, a couple people were here because they were told somewhere is it.
Sure.
Right.
Office that they were gonna be talking about that, of course, we, we didn't know where it would be.
Uh, what you can do is I can pull Monday, you can talk about it Monday and put it on your agenda, that's fair to everybody, right?
I think that would be great.
And Monday's a regular meeting?
It's a regular meeting.
Regular meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll just cancel the Mondays and we'll put it to bed Monday.
And I think we heard back from council on that, too, didn't we?
You heard back from everybody?
We did, yep, yeah, so we can bring that on to, into the table, too. Well, that was quite fifteen minutes.
Uh, yeah, I guess I've got another one.
Um, Jason, we can talk about the River Road Bridge.
Oh, perfect, come on up. It's much more pressing, I'm sure.
I just wanted to get forgotten about, um, we got, uh, our responses back. We need to go through them and, um, get a company.
This is, this is the firm that's actually gonna replace the entire thing, right?
Yeah, that.
It's gonna be the lead person, yes.
Wow.
We got seven RFQs.
Wow.
Now, according to the state, sorry, Jay.
No, that's fine.
According to the state, you can, um, you guys have that final decision. So the suggestion was possibly a five-person subgroup, which consists of Jason, myself, a selectman, one, and two residents. Then you're gonna bring forward, and then you guys are gonna have to interview the top two.
Two or three.
Two or three. But the packets are this, each, each one, it's this and it's pretty, so.
Well, I'm sure, it's, it's, yeah, it's thick.
So we have them all upstairs, we open them on Friday, so we just don't know what our next step is. So we need a selectman, and the suggestion was a group of five, but you can't have all of you take all seven and then.
Right.
It would be a recommendation to interview three out of the seven, yeah.
Top three, yeah. From that subcommittee, and that's kinda the state that's recommending this, right?
Yeah, it's a pretty standard process for everybody that goes through this.
Okay, but the whole making up that subcommittee is kind of a state recommendation?
It's, they recommended just having some residents, some, one, one selectman, and, like Jason and I, because we did the LPA training.
Right, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, and these, through the LPA training, there's a bunch of questions to ask and.
Mm-hmm.
The standard questions to ask when they come in to interview.
Well, that's good, yeah, okay. All right.
So how do we fill the two outside?
That's a good question, I don't know how you.
That's kinda what I think he's asking.
Yeah, I mean, you kinda gonna want somebody that knows a thing or two, if possible.
Well, there's somebody in town that has a engineer, somebody that has an engineering degree or something, that might be, look at it differently.
Good.
What's your time, friend?
The longer we wait, the longer they have to wait.
I mean, the state, the state money is available, so the faster we get it done, the faster we.
We're committed, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And it's sitting there.
Yeah, well, I'm sure, and there's hands.
She assured us it was sitting there, ready to go.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we just really wanted some direction on what you guys wanted to do, if you wanted to form a subcommittee or.
Right, well, I don't think it's a bad idea.
I mean, I feel like it'd be good to narrow it down, and then you guys can do the, the last.
Yeah, if it was, if, if it was only three, probably just say, bring them all in, but we're at seven, that's.
Seven.
That's, that's a bit, yeah, that's a bit.
Well, I would suggest maybe we ask the public if we have any structural civil engineers that would want to. Participate.
I mean, what, what, what are we talking, a couple, probably two, three meetings of that subcommittee?
Yeah, I mean, what they're gonna do is they're gonna take each one from each committee and read through that binder.
Right, exactly.
It's gonna take some time.
Some time, yeah.
It's probably a good six to ten hours, I would guess.
I would assume, yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And I would like to get then to them and then let them read them, and before we convene, because that's just a waste of time if you don't.
Right, yeah, maybe this is something that we can put on the, and on the, not so much the website, but the Facebook page of the PD and just solicit in.
Do what?
Put it on the PD Facebook page, like they've helped us in the past, and put it on ours, yours, and just.
Yeah, and given the deadline, if we don't hear everybody come forward, then like, okay, it was nice, but.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying leave it open for a month, I'm saying, leave, leave it open for a week, maybe, week and a half, and then at the next convene meetings, Eric, this is what we have for interest, and kinda select, you know, the board can select who they want as the.
Yeah, you're looking for two residents.
Right, the two residents.
Then you guys have to pick who wants to sit on the view.
Not it, um, so.
And do we have anybody with a really pertinent experience?
See how we all turn?
Yeah, I'll say, Donald.
Okay.
I'd be glad to help you if you need assistance.
Okay.
Well, we're down to, then.
I mean, he's your, he's your primary, but if he needs me to go, go for stuff for him, I'd be glad to do that, or if you wanna task me with anything, I'd be glad to help.
Sure, sure.
Perfect, all right, so I guess let's go with that, I guess what's the timeline, wanna go fit, do this week, and then see if we got anything back, beginning of the week?
Check it all week, and if you don't have anything, just.
Talk about next Monday, if there was your interest, run it another week. I think, I think that's gonna be the, the quickest target we're gonna be able to make.
Or if there's zero, then we can decide next Monday, like, eh, we've got enough.
Right, exactly, and we can just hand, hand ask, I'll say.
Yeah.
So.
Perfect.
That seem to work?
Works for me.
Good, perfect.
Thank you.
Do you have any update on the current load?
Um, Jacobs is putting together a proposal.
So it's been seen? He's looked at it?
He hasn't come out and inspected it yet.
Okay.
Trying to do all the paperwork and get that going, I'm hoping to hear from him this week.
Okay.
If I don't hear from him by Wednesday, I'm gonna.
Give him a call.
Give him a call.
Okay, that works, all right. Any other questions? Okay. Wanna talk about Monday, next Monday night, is that the agenda? We can do that, kinda what we want on it?
No, it's a regular meeting.
Yep, no, I understand that, but we've.
So you have your regular standard things on there?
Yep.
What else you wanna put on?
So we were talking about the building inspector, conversation.
So that's your stamped plans?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep, mm-hmm.
And then I think it was to the entire board, maybe it was just to me, we'll find out here in a second and a half.
A request to meet?
Yes, it was.
Towing company?
That was from the towing company.
Yep.
You can, you wanna do that, too?
Yeah, you can try that.
Are we going to ask Chief Moore to attend that as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think we should.
Now, with tonight, what's your plan after tonight, tonight you're gonna hold your public hearing?
Well, I think that that would be the next thing, would be to rehash, look at the public input.
I'd like to think that we could maybe finalize for the mere fact that it still has to go to DRA and it still has to go to legal before you post it on the twenty-ninth, because if you're gonna wait till the twenty-ninth to put something on, you run the risk of going to deliberative session a few days later with something that's disallowed or something that's illegal, so.
Right, and, and if we don't do it next week, um, I mean, it only leaves four days for legal and DRA to look at it.
Well, you, they're not leaving the finance, the opportunity to do their, their review either before they come to deliberative session on Saturday the third.
Okay.
So I'd like to wrap it up, I mean, we're not gonna stand six hours tonight, I hope. And then we can, you know, we can go through all the comments, and if we got time, we do, we have time, but.
Right.
Six hours is.
Yeah.
Just to, let you know, too, I did put the video up. Comp, uh, the cable committee only runs a maximum of five hours, so live stream shows black for five hours and fifty minutes, the live video that I put up on from their video, it's in the video section, it's only four hours and something, so it's cut out an hour's worth of your meeting, so.
But the audio portion is there.
I left the audio alone, it's a black screen.
Right, but they can at least hear.
Put your earbuds in and go for it.
But up to midnight, right, only up to midnight?
No, no, the live is the whole five hours, fifty minutes.
Okay, all right.
It's the one that you wanna watch live is not.
Okay, all right.
Because I could only grab theirs and it's only five hours.
Well, I think that just proved we need shorter meeting times.
Yeah, the same.
So, all right.
For the tone thing, my understanding is that they wanna come for the dislike of somebody else being invited, should that company be invited? Did I understand the email right?
I thought it, I, I understood the email, it's just it was the, it was the chief in the tow company, that's why I understood it, maybe I misunderstood.
I understood they were unhappy with the other company that invited.
Oh, I'll reread it, if that's the case, then I think they should be invited, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, I mean, if that's the case, I think they should be invited, yeah.
So who's gonna make that determination?
I'll reread, yeah, I can reread it, yeah, and I'll just reach out to Naomi and say, can you contact all of them? Yeah, yeah, I, I just interpreted, yeah, I guess the other way, but that's.
Yeah, I read it too quick, so it's fine.
Nope, it's fine. Some of that stuff was pretty old, too, there was some older emails in there, yeah, so.
Yeah, they gave you the backstory.
Yeah.
I was like twenty, I've read this.
Yeah, that's what I was reading, that was the twenty-twenty, it was, that's why I was a little confused, and I kept having to hit the, of course, on the mobile app, I had to keep dropping down.
I ain't had a lot of time to read thoroughly this week, so.
So this is the. Closer.
No, just for, everybody knows how much I like your Facebook, not at all, but, uh, anybody inquired about, um, the winter sand Jay put out, it was the winter sand that was the cheapest bid, not long, and.
Had some grit to it.
Winter sand is used to give everybody traction when it's slippery out, that's it, doesn't need to be a special spec, you don't put in septic systems or build in spec roads out of it, so. It's perfectly fine, use new driveway. I did attend a timber showing at the Phelps Farm Forest, just as. As nobody really, could have, could have been a potential bidder, I'm not gonna, but I just wanted to say, I've never been to a town showing, to be honest, just drew along the back, it's all.
Was there many people there then?
There was quite a few loggers there, yeah, a couple other foresters that were there on behalf of loggers, and it was playing very well, I thought. Was asked if I had any input, and I said I'm not dared to represent the town, but if I had any suggestions, that whoever got the bid, I wanna make sure that they did a neat job in such a high-traffic area by the public, so.
Right.
I have a question?
Yes.
Um, we got an email about meet the candidates.
Oh, yeah.
Well. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't have a problem with it.
I just wanna just say that it's nice to pick a night that we're not here, but we're not holding it here.
No, it should be.
So meet the candidates was proposed to be held Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, that's school vacation week, and typically we aren't allowed in the school, because that's when they do some of their stuff. So, um, I just wanted everybody to know, I mean, that's, it's not a meeting night per se, but last year we did it the week after vacation, and I try to do it closer to, because you won't even have your, you won't have any of your mailers, you won't have anything by then.
So we wanna push it off?
I was gonna suggest pushing it off a week, because we haven't even talked about it, but if you push it off a week and you look at the calendar, you have that first week in March. Um, March fourth through the eighth, and then the voting is the twelfth.
Probably be a bad, horrible thing, that one week, I don't think it's gonna.
I mean, if you guys got your hearts out on February twenty-seventh, I'm just gonna tell you right now, that's school vacation week.
Yeah, which, again, if it's gonna be hard to get in the cafeteria, that's not good, yeah, I think that was a really good, I think it's a, it's a good, um, setting.
Yeah.
Yeah, for, for what we, for what the, what we do there.
So if you want me to call the school and see what's available the week of March fourth through the eighth, I can do that?
I would see why.
You said which day is the election?
The twelfth.
Uh, twelfth, it's a week before.
Yeah.
Kind of fresh in everyone's mind.
Yeah, 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 that's probably funny.
I don't see any reading on it.
All right, I'll see what I can do.
Okay.
What time is better for everybody out?
Hasn't always been held like seven?
Seven, I think.
I think it's seven.
Yeah, I think it was seven.
I think it's usually scheduled for like an hour, hour and a half, I think.
I think that's what it was scheduled for, yeah.
I gotta say, I said scheduled, I didn't say it turned out to be.
There're gonna be, with three seats, there're gonna be so many candidates.
Uh, yeah, well, we, we hope.
So I'd give it.
Couple hours, probably, at least. And, and anticipate more?
Or at least consider how, how to split that up, because I know two years ago, it was everybody at the same time, it was the two candidates for selectmen, and it was.
I remember that, yeah, yeah.
Everybody, everybody at one long table.
Yeah.
Right.
And then last year, it was just candidates for selecting, because there were seven of them, and.
Then we swapped with ethics, we swapped places in ethics committee, and then we actually swapped and let the school board do it.
And they did their own thing, yeah.
Right, right.
So, yeah, I don't know that we need to solve that right now, but maybe worth considering. Whoever, whoever's having that discussion behind scenes, I would, I would guess we're gonna have more than seven candidates this year, three seats.
Hoping so.
Seven o'clock.
Alright. Looks like the gang's all here. Uh, gonna open the public hearing, seven o'clock, to hear public testimony and comment on the twenty twenty four overall proposed town budget, including all separate special and petition warrant articles, as well as disclosure of the default budget. So, Beth?
I'll start. Does everyone have a copy of the workbook?
Yes.
Okay, uh, in the workbook, um, it starts off by reviewing our revenues. The ones that we estimated for twenty-three, the ones we received for twenty-three, and the ones that we're estimating for twenty-four. Um, it goes into detail on how important our revenues are, how they offset the taxes. There's a lot of reading in it, so you don't have to. Um, on page four is the summary of our default budget. And regarding this, um, I did talk to town council regarding those three items. The fire department stipend for the officers, the overtime, and the New Hampshire retirement system for the emergency management director, and she agreed that all the calculations are correct.
And they should, they should represent on there?
They should be in the default budget. Um, so that brings our two thousand and twenty-four default budget to eight million, two hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. We're subtracting our estimated revenues of four million, ninety-four thousand, nine hundred, so we need to raise by taxation four million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. This is on page four. And then on page six is the summary of the proposed budget. What was presented to the board of selectmen, and they made some minor changes last week. The final number came to eight million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars. We lessed the estimated revenues, so the estimated amount of taxes to be raised is four million, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. The following pages just, uh, show you where the increases are. The driving accounts for nondiscretionary payroll contracts and discretionary. You can see by the chart that what's driven the increase is nondiscretionary items, and the number one thing is our insurances. Our property liability insurance, our workers' comp insurance, and our unemployment insurance. That went up a total of a hundred and fifteen thousand, five, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And then the rest of the pages, um, justification for each department, why there's an increase. The detail, line by line. And that is page ten through twenty. You've seen it before. Four, four, and then on the last page, I just did a chart of all the warrant articles that you'll be reviewing tonight, and their tax impact, and how they all add up. So I guess we'll go to, that is the operating budget. Was there any discussion on the operating budget warrant article?
By the board? Any questions, comments, concerns? Again, Beth, thank you for this, uh, this packet. This is awesome, as always. Um, it really lays it out exactly how, how it is.
And again, it's just the operating, yeah.
Takes all the questions out. Yeah, it takes all the questions out, that's for sure. There's still plenty of questions, I'm sure.
Oh, yes. Trying to give you as much information as we can.
But this definitely assists, I'll say.
So everybody doesn't have on the entire, the entire increase over defaults, so it's three hundred and thirty-three thousand, two seventy-eight.
Correct.
Half of that's, oh, yeah, the departments, I don't believe that's too bad.
Represents four point zero five percent. But again, half of that is eaten up just by insurances, almost. Not quite, but almost. Alright. Board have any questions? No? Alright, thank you.
Warrant article agree?
We will open up the, I, I, again, and the, the board can override me if they want, um, but I think I would like to try and do it article by article. And once we get done with the article, we put it to bed and move on to the next one. Does that sound reasonable to the board?
Maybe.
In terms of public comment or total decision?
Yeah, no, 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 the, the, yeah, the, the public comment, um, obviously there'll be, we'll have next week to make more decisions.
Okay. I understood.
Yeah, make more decisions next week. Um, next week will definitely be the final stamp. But at least the discussion, et cetera, I don't, I don't prefer not to bounce around. So, did that seem reasonable?
Yeah.
Very.
Okay. Alright, so with that being said, we will hear any public comment on the budget, article number seven. Tom? What's that? Oh, yeah, uh, name and address when you get up to the podium, please.
Thomas Klow, one twenty-five Concord Stage Road.
Thank you.
Just suggestion to take a look at the fuel prices again, because it was October ninth, when you determined that at four dollars for gasoline and five dollars for diesel. And, uh, the price at the pump has changed since then. For example, I did some Googling on it, and January second, the price of a gallon of gas at the pump was averaged at three oh nine in the state. And then if you figure your gas tax is over forty cents, forty point five cents, so if you were to compare apples to apples, you're talking about probably a, a bid price that you might be able to get for as low, as two sixty-nine a gallon. And again, I don't have the background you do on this, but, uh, you know, that's compared to four dollars, which you included in the budget. And for diesel, the, uh, price at the pump is averaging four seventeen. And the, uh, tax on that, which is included in the pump price, is forty-six point five cents per gallon, so again, there's quite a differentiation there, so I think it would be worth another look, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Any belts for article seven? Lori?
Lori Davis, Buxton School Road. Do I need to say anything else?
Nope. Now, now it's your, your comment.
I've been looking at all the budgets. And as a resident, we are going into a recession, and if you haven't noticed it, you should, building is off. During COVID, there were people who worked but did not get raises, but our town people got raises. Businesses are not giving raises, and close to a quarter of our people here in this town that pay taxes are on a fixed income. Cost of living social security was three point two this year. And I've said this to the schools and I'm saying this to you. I would like to see you all go back and look at these things, because I'm seeing raises into people that are four and five percent. You've just taken out the people that are on fixed incomes. They're gonna have to do without. And that's not right, because they are the people that pay the taxes in this town, and we all need them. So I'm asking you to go back, study this, think about it, because those people will have to sell their homes, decide how much they're gonna heat their homes, whether they can eat, and whether they're gonna be able to use electricity. That's crucial, and it's wrong.
Yeah, as long as there's nobody else who wants to comment.
Can you get up to the microphone?
Yeah. Yeah.
I just wanted to emphasize that I was speaking for myself.
Oh, okay.
Not for the finance committee in that comment that I made.
Thank you.
Uh, Lori, I'm assuming same for you. No, no, I know, I just, okay, thank you. Alright.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else for article six? Frank?
Frank Campana, Quaker Street, three twenty-two, Quaker Street. You can stop me if you think I'm going off track a little bit.
Okay.
But I'm gonna back up, uh, comparing this year's budget, which I didn't have too much of a chance to digest over the last few meetings. But, uh, I, I look back to last year's budget and wonder about the current that you're proposing. Last year's, I'll actually, I better not say that one. You, you ended up the year with a five hundred and twelve thousand dollar, over, a five hundred and twelve thousand dollar surplus, almost five hundred and thirteen thousand. I know there are reasons why, and I understand the reasons why, cause there's the same reasons why, because when you had default budgets. Alright, missing personnel. I get that. Year end, year end expenditures that you folks authorized was a little better than sixty-seven thousand dollars. Sixty-seven, seven, seven, seven. That left a balance of four hundred and forty-five thousand, eighty-nine dollars that went into the unassigned fund balance, which I understand it's low, alright, I get that. But let me say this. You did not, uh, put any money forth, again, reasons are understood why, but you did not put any money forth to reduce the taxes. So as you present this budget here, uh, I think probably, I don't know how people are warned, but the handwriting that's beyond the wall for this budget come by the end of the year.
Hi, Tom Flaherty, Sunrise Lane. Uh, just have a question, clarification. Insurances are a big driver. Are the insurances locked in now, or are they estimates? Could they change?
I believe they could change, but they're pretty close. Oh, they're locked? Okay, nevermind, they're locked.
Okay. I asked because the schools aren't, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, these are locked. Thank you. Anybody else for article seven? Okay. Maybe no, move on. To article eight, which is the collective bargaining unit, um, between the town and the police department, New England Police Benevolent Association. It's a three-year, um, collective bargaining agreement, tentative agreement, um, and these numbers represent five percent per year. Am I saying that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
My only question, that's what I thought of this, so I'll word it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see that reflected in the language.
Okay.
Of the, of the actual warrant.
I'm just looking where we'd be, that's all.
If it's the yearly increase, like if I, like, show the dollar amount, the five percent, five percent.
Yeah, usually we put it in the mailer and the, and then the purpose underneath. I'm not saying we, we can't, but yeah, usually we just put it in that, that purpose underneath the mailer, we send it.
Are, are you asking to put five percent next each number? Like?
Or anywhere in that.
Yeah.
We could do that.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking like, there, 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 just five percent, five percent.
Okay. Lori?
It's a question.
Still gonna be heard by the. That's right. The viewing, the viewing.
Lori Davis, Buxton School Road. On these, uh, collective bargaining agreement, did we just negotiate on salary? Did we do anything to look at benefits and start bringing those down? Was there any negotiating, any middle on that, or did we just?
I'm gonna defer to our.
I can't recall that off the top of my head. Let me see if I can find it for you. You can?
We did not.
We did, yeah, I was gonna say.
We did a handful of things, not necessarily benefits, but.
Well, no, it's, um, we talked about, um, leaves, which personal time. We talked about insurance, but that was for dental and short term, long term, which we said we would offer it only if and when it becomes offered to everyone. Uniform and clothes allowance was another piece of it. Education incentive was another part of it, depending on your associate's bachelor's or master's, and then wages. That was basically it, so we didn't talk about.
The reason I bring this up is I was a broker, so I know all about insurance, and I know what they pay in the public sector. People's benefits are being cut right and left, and if people want more money, they generally lose on the benefit side, cause companies can't do that, and I am concerned that we're not adjusting appropriately on the town side.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Tom?
Tom Klow, one twenty-five Concord Stage Road, again, speaking for myself. I am kind of a news junkie, in that I read newspapers a lot and, and watch the news regularly, and there's shortage of police officers. It's hard for departments within the state and within the neighboring states to fill those slots. So I, I think, you know, right now, I think we, if I'm correct, we finally hit the point where we're at full staff. I may be wrong on that.
You are correct.
Pretty sure we are.
You are correct.
And we need to hold on to the ones we have, because there's not a lot out there for people knocking on the door to get into police work, so, that's all.
Thank you. Frank? Yep.
You.
Frank Campana again. You're presuming, right?
No, I saw you, I saw you kinda nodding up, so I knew you were coming.
I, I don't, I think it was the last meeting when you had a draft in front of you. A question was asked on several articles, what percentage increase that might be. It was a little bit in flux. I, I could understand it was hard to come up with a, you know, with a firm percentage, because people are different. But that, I did not write that down at the time. I, I don't know if it's because you did not agree.
I can answer that. For the police one?
Yes.
At, last week, it had not been formally accepted, so we were kinda cagey about discussing it.
Okay.
Uh, but they have accepted, is my understanding, um, so we can lock in and say it was, the agreement that both sides came to is five percent, five, five, so.
Okay.
Three years at five percent each.
Okay.
So that's why we didn't get into it last week.
That's why, right, and I didn't understand why, but that's okay. Not a quick, uh, a trick question, but, uh, and it may not, uh, may have to, with your approval, come back to this article. Can you, uh, give me the full cumulative amount at the end of three years?
I'm sure we can.
Maybe you can confirm what I have?
Three ninety-seven, seven eighty-eight.
Okay, well, that's not what I have, so I guess I'll have to.
Is that, that's the total?
That's cumulative.
For?
I had.
Three years.
I had four fifty-nine and some change.
Okay.
So I really need to be in agreement, one way or the other. So I'm wrong.
And respectfully disagree, but. We have three ninety-seven, seven eighty-eight.
And what?
Ninety-seven, what?
Three nine seven.
Yep.
Seven eighty-eight.
Seven eight eight.
And that number is made how?
It takes your first year, and then the next year it adds the new plus, and then the next year it adds the new plus.
So it's, it's the compounding of three years?
It's the increase over the life of the contract, yes.
So, three years at sixty-five thousand, two years at sixty-six thousand, and one year at sixty-nine thousand, and that comes out to three ninety-seven.
Well, it's actually three years at sixty-five.
Yes.
Okay. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Alright, sorry.
Okay, now I can't continue with that then.
Okay.
Alright, thanks. Well, actually, I guess I can.
Okay.
So somebody was quick at the math with me, even though I had the wrong number. That, uh, three ninety-seven, seven eighty-eight, what, what does that, uh, at, at the current net assessed valuation, what does that impact? What's the tax impact?
But you're taking three years over one net assessed evaluation, is that what you're asking?
I, I said, right, at the current.
Right, but you're taking the three years cumulative, meaning to get you for three years.
That's right, yeah.
So it's apples and bananas, isn't it?
I mean, I know how to do it, but.
I, I'm just saying, but if you take the total of three years, the net assessed valuation's not gonna remain the same for three years.
That's what I said, at the current, I, I just wanna know what the current, obviously, well, you, you'd like to think the net assessed valuation's gonna increase.
So if it gets voted in for twenty-four, what's the?
Right, again, I.
Based on the third, based on the net assessed evaluation that we're using for this year's numbers only, is, um, thirty-one cents.
Okay. Yeah, well, even though my number was wrong, I had thirty-six cents, so.
There's a nickel. There's a nickel.
But, and, and I didn't, you know, I didn't have enough numbers in front of me, so... I, I don't know how much the net assessed valuation increased this year from last year, and, you know, going on, so I wouldn't even...
So if you're gonna do all your math, then net assessed evaluation we're using is one million, two hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred fifty-one dollars.
Right. But, what, what would be the estimate of an increase?
We base on about a half a percent increase every year.
Okay, all right, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Anybody else for Article Eight? Okay, move on to Article Nine. This is the...
Okay, but nine and ten, you have to make your decision.
Right, and that's, I think, I think that's probably a decision that we have to make tonight, at least.
Which one you're gonna do?
Correct, which one we're gonna select. I guess...
Are you gonna include the highway and the raises, or you're not gonna?
Do we wanna bring Jay up to the podium?
Yeah, maybe do a quick recap for the audience on why that matters.
And how we got to A to B.
Okay. So, Article Nine is non-union raises to include highway. Article Ten would be excluding highway.
Get it backwards.
All the way around.
Not as far as two included.
Oh, my fault, sorry. Reason for that is Article Eleven, which would be a wage adjustment for the full-time highway department employees, a three-dollar step one increase. So, I guess we're gonna leave it up to you guys, what you wanna...
Which would bring that first, that the first step up to what?
Twenty-three with the CDL.
Okay. So we're currently starting at nineteen?
Twenty.
Twenty, okay.
Twenty with CDL, nineteen fifty.
Twenty, yeah, okay.
And then, we had some questions, this was pretty late at night, if I recall, we had some questions about no means no, and mixing these up.
Yeah, did we get Wade in on that?
Well, yeah, we use the same wording as the DPW did four years ago.
Yeah, but we, we asked the question if...
But you asked the question...
On the standalones.
No means no, that's not gonna change, no means no.
So...
So, you're looking at two different things, nine and ten is a...
Is the non-union wage.
Well, nine and ten represents, let's call it a COLA if you want to, and then eleven is a wage adjustment. That's how it was worded when we did it the last time for a dollar. It was a wage adjustment, and they were included in the pool for the cost of living.
So this is just the pool inclusion?
Right.
That's all this is?
So if the pool include, if the wage adjustment fails, they don't get the three dollars an hour at the step one.
Right.
But if you throw them into your wage pool.
Together.
They would get that percentage. But if you leave them out altogether, and they get no, they get nothing.
That was our question, was the fact of if, if the, if we put them in the pool, and that passes, but the, but the standalone fails.
They would still get the same chart that they're on, same steps, but it would be just the adjustment of the cost of living. Which you guys used that five percent like you did for the police.
Answer my question.
And we're arguing that a wage adjustment is distinct from a raise.
That's right, and that's why in there it says a wage adjustment on eleven, where the other ones talk about a five percent pay increase.
Okay, all right.
And I can see there's a mistake of the purpose of, I see five percent is included in nine, but it would also be included in ten, it's not there right now.
Okay. So the number on ten is not correct?
Just the add the five percent, no, the numbers are correct, it's just the wording.
Okay.
It's not identical.
Okay. All right, so I guess this is, that would be the question, are we including the DPW in the non-union pay increase, or are we not, because of their standalone?
If they are included, that same, that five percent to that same twenty-dollar guy represents a dollar, right? It's a...
Okay. All right, so if both pass, it's four dollars.
It's almost four dollars. So you're still at twenty-four for step one.
All right.
With the CDL.
Right.
Neighboring towns are hiring, Henneker's at twenty-four. Earring is higher there. They were kinda in the same pickle that we're in right now. They got their wages up a little bit quicker than we were able to, and they're fully staffed.
Do you know what, do you know what they're paying?
They were paying upwards of twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay.
That is, that's somebody with a couple of years of experience, not staff one right out the gate, but... I know Henneker was trying to hire people at twenty-four, and they were struggling.
You, you fully staffed down there?
Yeah, just as of, well, tomorrow. I was short for two weeks.
Okay, I gotta ask, what's your number, starting rate, CDL?
Just shy of twenty-one.
Just shy of twenty-one, okay. All right. All right, so there's the meat and potatoes of it, what are we thinking?
I think we should hear from the public, yeah, get them to weigh in.
We're gonna put them together for now, though.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess what we'll, we'll hear is...
Nine to eleven.
I, I don't know if eleven should play into it.
Yeah, I would say discussion of nine versus ten at this point.
I think it's a discussion of nine versus ten. Knowing that eleven's coming, but, just the discussion in between. To include or not to include, knowing that there is a wage adjustment article behind it.
I, I just wouldn't wanna shut somebody down if they're trying to compare and contrast eleven with the whole thing.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if, if we're, if they're gonna do the math that you did, I don't see why not, but, we're similar too anyways, so. All right, floor's open. That was clear as mud.
Lori Davis, Buxton School Road, I'm the mud.
Okay.
It's a mess. You've got three warrant articles, and we're not really good at three money warrant articles for multiple people. I think if you wanna get something passed for the town, make that very clear. I don't disagree that they shouldn't be brought up, but I think you're gambling really bad if you do double loads on both sides. I think you're asking for the taxpayers to start cracking numbers, and it's not gonna look pretty, and you don't want to tank somebody. I think we need to be a little more clear on why we need to bring them up on eleven, but I think if you double-load, you're asking for a big problem, and once that's done, we're gonna have a worse time hiring. But I think we need to sell this in a much more positive way, be a lot more clear about it. But I would not go for two in one and then add that one, I think people are gonna get a little snarky about it.
Neil?
Neil Kirk, Mount Dearborn Road, speaking for myself. I'm confused as to how much increases are actually going to be going to the highway department under any scenarios, because on page sixteen of the budget, in line four oh three, in line four oh seven, there are substantial increases of thirty thousand and fifteen thousand dollars that have to do with pay in some way.
You run those lines by us again?
Uh, sorry. Four oh, I'm sorry, four oh four and four oh seven. Four oh seven is called call bonus, and four, sorry, four oh four, sorry, is called call bonus, and four oh seven is called wages, truck drivers and operators. And so, there's forty-five thousand there, and then I don't know how much is in each of these other articles that would go to highway, so, I, I don't have an opinion on this, I'm just raising the issue that there's a lot of money floating around here, and it's very unclear how much is going, under what circumstances, to whom. And I hope you folks can, can clarify that. I'd also like to point out that, as I calculated, the proposed budget versus the current budget, in terms of taxes, not the total amount, but in terms of the tax increase, it's ten point five percent. Your proposed budget is four hundred thousand tax dollars more than the amount we raised for taxes last year for the two thousand twenty-three budget. That's a ten point seven percent increase.
Well, let me ask you, Neil, does that account for the warrant articles that went through and passed and got included in that article?
No.
And got included in the budget?
That includes all of those articles, so, you'd have to subtract those out, you're right.
Okay, just wanna, I just wanna make sure that we're apples to apples.
Some of that the taxpayers voted for.
Okay, in twenty-three.
In twenty-three, and some of it they didn't.
Okay.
It'd be nice to separate that out, so that we could actually see what the proposed tax increase of the budget is, above and beyond the warrant articles of two thousand twenty-three. Thank you.
Bill Anderson, East Road. My, my only issue is, I think we need to keep this as clean as possible to the voters, and not, not muddle it with these three articles. And I think the easiest way to do that is, in Article Nine, you're accounting for everybody except highway, and supporting wages. And then, if you left out Article Ten, and you went to eleven, then you say, and by the way, we're covering our highway people.
Here.
In article, of this article here, which is a higher bump. It keeps it cleaner, everybody non-highway, and this one here, because if you muddle them together, people are gonna say, well, highway's getting this over here, that should be good enough, we're not gonna give them this one too, and then they don't get the bump that they need to hire.
Thank you.
Good evening, Brent Dickinson, Dills Way. So, I got a question, if you don't mind. So, you're only hiring CDL Bs?
That's minimum.
That's memo.
Minimum, I was gonna say, you gotta haul equipment around somehow, so...
Or B with a Pental restriction.
Right, exactly.
Or A with a Pental, excuse me.
Right. I think the public oughta be aware that, you know, these guys aren't just driving a truck down the road, they're operating equipment. They're out when we're sleeping, so we can go to work. I would encourage you to do everything you can to get every dollar for these guys. Not many people wanna do it. And, from what I've seen, CDLAs, it's over thirty dollars an hour, just to drive a truck. Not plow the road, not run equipment. Equipment operators are thirty, thirty-five, equipment operators in Massachusetts are fifty to sixty. So, if we wanna go to work every day, gotta pay the ones that are essential, so, thanks.
Thank you, Brett. Anybody else? Tom?
Tom Klow, 125 Concord Stage Road, I'd just like to echo what Bill Anderson said, I, I agree with that, that you can't be confusing. Sometimes when we put articles on the warrant in the past where the people don't understand them, they'll just vote no. And, so, to me, it would make sense to leave out Article Ten. If that's what you're aiming for.
Thank you.
The board taking any comments, or?
Yeah, of course.
Well, I know everybody here's in favor, so I just wanna give a little bit institutional knowledge, and they only, probably members better than me, but there was six years in a row that the, I believe, that the cost of living raises got voted down, in a row. And then when we finally got one for the non-union employees, I believe it was a three percent, but they took ten percent health insurance. So people that had full family plan insurance, which I was one of them, actually took a pretty significant cut in pay. So, the, the increase that he's looking for in eleven is what those employees lost back then, ten, fifteen years ago, not in today's, um, today's wages. You know, that three dollars is, if you, if you figure three percent, roughly fifty cents an hour for six years, that's, that's just what they lost back then, never mind. So, and I know everybody's gotten up, has been in favor, so I'm not scolding, I just wanted to give that little bit of, somebody that was here back then, give that little bit of knowing, so...
I did, while I'm thinking, I did get an email, if we could pull our mics closer to our mouths, there was, there was a lot of muttering, so. All right, anybody else wanna comment? Neil?
One other thing to amplify what Bill said. If you include the highway folks with everybody else, and the article states, this is for a COLA, it will pass. And then if you state in Article Eleven, or whatever article you're going to use, that this is to make us comparable to other towns, so that we can hire people, and you put that in the article, then it's clear what the purpose is, and why, if the voters want to do that, they understand what they would, would have to do. But, Bill's right, it's got to be clear, these articles are confusing, because you don't understand why we're being asked to vote for Article Nine or Ten, and then also for Article Eleven.
Understood, thank you. Anybody else? Frank?
Frank Campana again. I'm trying to be courteous to the board and to the public, I get my questions out today, and won't make the deliberative session very long.
Promise?
No, no, I won't promise. Just a little, I, I'm not...
We appreciate the gall, though.
Yeah.
The intention.
The intent, all right.
I, I'm not, I'm not just debating pay raises, okay? But, you know, the general public has to get pay raises also, to keep up with insurances, and I don't, I don't know what the current insurance plans are, single, two-person, family, but I think they've always been like around twenty thousand dollars. So, that's a perk, you know, for the town employees. I don't get that, right, in, you know, my three point two percent. I get a deductible at the end of the year. But, here, here's my point, the reason I get up. In May of two thousand twenty-three, there was a staffing reassignment proposal for Janus, you probably were not aware of it.
I am aware.
Okay.
Thank you.
The total of that disposable money was twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars went to a fifty cent an hour pay raise for the highway folks. Fifty cents is not a lot, I get it, but they got it, all right? Again, here's the extra money you had in the budget. In December of twenty-three, last month, there was, uh, in all, you folks authorized an on-call bonus of fifty-seven hundred dollars, a little bit more, for the period between November and April, winter months, try to get people to come on board, stay on board. That total amount, I mean, I, I have, I have the document here, on-call bonus, this was the year-end of the year. The total was sixty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. So, it was fifty-seven hundred dollars per person for those short months. The total, you found sixty-three thousand dollars, and if you take the fifty-seven hundred and fifty, again, it's not a lot of money, but divided by fifty-two weeks, it's a hundred and ten bucks. You know, I, I'm not arguing, somebody could say, oh, that's not much, you know, well, it's not much, but still, between the fifty cents and the fifty-seven hundred, you found money to give raises. So, they're starting whatever level that bumped these folks up to. That's where they're starting from, is with those couple of increases. Thanks.
So just a point of clarification, that bonus that we gave this year was a, was definitely put in the books as a one-time thing?
Yes, it was.
It was, it was, that was, it was very clear that we have the funding to do this, we're gonna make this attempt, this is a one-time, do not expect it next year, we'll try, but don't expect it.
That's a good point, and, and I agree, it wasn't one-time.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, so I guess the public has spoken, so what do we wanna do, include or not to include?
Well, I'd rather see them get the three dollars an hour.
And I, I don't disagree the fact of, of keeping the, the waters as clean as possible, and not, not muddying the, the articles, if we can avoid it, at all costs. And there's a lot of verbiage in these, because it's including who's included, not included, et cetera. So... Yeah. Makes it difficult. It makes it difficult to read, and as, you know, a couple of them said, that a lot of times confusion means a no, so.
And if this passes without them and theirs fails, everybody else gets five percent, they get nothing.
They get nothing, right, right. So that would be a fatal blow as well. Mark, come on up. Just identify yourself, please.
Mark Rourke, Fire Department. I just just wanted to know why the Fire Department wasn't included in these.
As far as the full-time Fire Department members?
Yeah.
That I don't know. Probably because of the standalone article, I would assume, but I don't know. I couldn't tell you. Is that? I guess how do we come to that conclusion? When we wrote them? Okay, all right, we can reconfigure it if the board wants to put Fire Department in there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just-
It does say-
It says part-time.
It says the part-time.
Fire, but not, not, I was under the, and when you guys get to me,
Yep.
I will explain that more on my line.
Yep.
Last week, I was under the assumption that, that, I didn't realize that Article Nine and Ten were COLA raises and not just to try to get you up to where we're supposed to be.
Okay.
Okay, so that's my mistake, and I apologize for that, but I was just reading this, and I'm like, why isn't the Fire Department in there, we're non-union, and you're giving the raises to everybody else in town, except for our people, so.
Okay.
Just a question.
Yep.
I'll be back up in a minute.
No, could be a few minutes.
Well, could be.
All right, all right, so that would change the number if we did include them, but I think it follows suit with the DPW. I don't see why it wouldn't follow suit with them.
Follow suit with what?
As far as putting them in the non-
Put everybody in with a COLA and then the two-way?
We'll call nine and ten the COLA, and we'll call the other ones the adjustment. Yeah, that if we're gonna put DPW in the COLA bucket, I don't see why we shouldn't put the Fire Department in the COLA bucket.
So would that mean they could each be simplified and-
Oh, substantially.
Well, what I mean is they could be simplified to, for the purposes of five percent, five percent pay increases for for non-union town employees, period. And then on the second line, for non-union town employees to exclude Department of Public Works. Again, we're still gonna decide between these, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you can shorten it up.
Am I capturing the actual correct summary?
I believe you are.
It was very short last year. It says town and library personnel, I believe.
And I don't want to trim the part of the end about nine months, twelve months, I'm talking about the, like, first five lines beforehand.
So I have twenty-twenty-two's ballot, sample ballot. The other one I know is sitting next to my recliner on the floor. Article Four, shall the town raise appropriate the sum of sixty-two thousand three hundred and seventy, seventy-seven dollars to be used for raises for non-union town and library personnel? If approved, this additional will become a part of the annual budget. That's it. Real simple, real short. So. And the purpose actually is decent to read, too. This article represents a three percent pay increase for all non-union seasonal part-time and per diem and full-time employees. Sixty-three percent of this warrant article goes to your first responders. I'll keep that out just in case. So, I like how simple that is, it's, I can't get much simpler than that.
No.
I mean, yes, the number is going to obviously go up from where Article Ten's number is because obviously the Fire Department's gonna get included, if that's the way the board wants to go. I mean, regardless, I think it still holds. And his article does say wage adjustment as well, so.
The two fire and that says wage adjustment, so.
So.
You either put everybody in, and then everybody gets it, or?
I think that would clean it up.
I think that's the cleanest.
Yeah, I think that would-
I think put everybody in for the COLA and then let them-
And then would simplify that article substantially.
Let them sell their standalone loan article.
Okay, yeah.
In my own opinion.
Because that's what you did a couple of years ago, you had your standalone, and you were also in the bucket.
Right, because the point of the, the point of their articles, which was the point of mine, was to give the baseline salary increase.
Right.
But they still should be included in the so-called cost of living, if that's what we're calling it. To be cut out, that kind of cuts a third of the-
Employees out.
Yeah, well, it cuts a third of the intent of the, I don't know if it's really a third, but it cuts a portion of the intent of their article, you know? I'm in favor of, I'm in favor of-
Everybody being-
Everybody being part of it, and then the two that have their own standalone, they can take that to the ballot.
Try and sell it, right? You good with that?
So we're talking about Ten, including full-time fire, so.
And DPW.
What about the-
Yeah, it already does.
That would be a standalone wage adjustment.
Do we know, Beth, can you tell us how much adding full-time fire would impact Article Ten?
We may have to get over a few minutes. Maybe we can go to the wage adjustment, maybe go to eleven, maybe we'll-
No.
Ninety-eight what?
One ninety.
And the twelve-month would be? Probably one fifteen? Close to one sixteen. I was gonna say one fifteen, one sixteen, I'll just throw a number up there, it's close.
About one hundred and thirty?
Okay, we're both wrong.
So the nine-month number is ninety-one?
Ninety-eight.
Okay, that's where the math went wrong.
Yeah.
That's for everyone, not just fire, correct?
That's for-
Okay, but that's not just a fire out on.
Right.
No.
Yeah, that's every non-union employee we have.
Be one thirty for everybody.
For a twelve-month period.
For a twelve-month period.
Right, but for the nine-month, it would be ninety-eight.
But it includes everybody for ninety-eight.
Everybody's in the pool, right.
Everybody, except me, just to let you know that.
Contracted.
Yeah. I'm not included.
Right. But it does include the police chief. Okay, just want to make sure. Everybody knows that. It doesn't, does include the police chief. All right, so I think that we have all leaned to eliminate Article Nine as written, and not go that route. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
Nine's off?
So nine's off.
Beth, can you tell us what the tax impact's gonna be now? On which number? Yeah.
And Article Ten now includes the Fire Department, and it's gonna get simplified to be all non-union employees are gonna get, and it still represents overall five percent. So with that said, that's what we all agreed to, I would believe.
Is there anybody else that excludes besides town administrator?
Everybody's here.
Except for the police, which are under contract or under collective bargaining.
Just wondering if we should call that out.
I thought that, did the article not, on that?
No, you can exclude me on your article.
It just says-
Like, I know your contract's gonna supersede it anyway, but just to spell it out for everybody, there's no increase.
It just says raises for non-union town and library personnel.
In your purpose, you can exclude me.
Yeah, and the purpose in this one didn't say anything, but that's where it was. All right, so do we want to reopen to comment about putting everybody in the bucket, five percent? I think we probably should now, we've decided a direction. All right, Article Ten, which includes fire, everybody that's non-union, excludes the town administrator, and the police officers that are under the collective bargaining, add a five percent raise. Numbers have been presented. Anybody want to have a comment on it?
Lori Davis, Buxton School Road. I think you're bastically out of line on what you're asking for. Three-point-two percent COLA and retirement. I think you are doing a huge disservice to the taxpayers of this town.
I do want to mention, a couple of years ago, somewhere around the neighborhood of nine percent, and I brought it up as department head, and the board stuck to three percent. We stuck to three percent. There's been one percent, or nine percent, or eight percent, or three percent. And I think the overall agreement, at least what I brought up was reasonably with five percent, is because that's what we came up with, collective bargaining, and thought it was only fair to treat non-union the same as union. Is that accurate, with everybody else?
I believe that was the discussion.
That's why.
I think there was some discussion about that, but it was not the only reason.
Right. Anybody else? Discussion on Ten as amended to include? Frank? No?
So Article Ten becomes Article Nine, right?
It will re-
It will, moving forward, but for tonight, I'm gonna keep referencing what was on the print. Yep. Okay, anybody else?
Quick question. In the article, it says, for the purposes of, it's gonna say, five percent pay increases for town employees, not included in other warrant articles.
It's gonna-
Is that confusing, or is that gonna be removed?
Yeah, we'll have to clean that up.
It's gonna be cleaned up, yeah, it's gonna have to be substantially cleaned up.
Everybody listed there, I think we're gonna try to shorten it.
Yeah, we're probably just gonna say non-union, contracted, or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we put that there because we weren't sure what we were doing yet.
Right, that's exactly why we put it there. Anybody else? All right, move on to Article Eleven, which is the standalone wage adjustment, which represents, as DPW Director Fisk said, a three-dollar addition to each step, or for the step-one position, or is it all steps?
Three-dollar an hour base.
Base, okay. Base step raise. Neil?
Neil Kirk, Mount Dearborn Road. Clarification, I think, is necessary. Will this be included in the base rate so that the five percent will apply to this, or will this, or will the five percent not apply to this?
What goes in first, the five percent or the three dollars, right?
You guys need to decide that and make it clear one way or another.
Because the number that we have in Ten, currently written, would be representative of the current schedule, step schedule.
Right.
So.
Five percent on top of that?
That's, I understand your question, that's why I'm trying, yeah.
At least my understanding, they go in the order, the order that the articles are put on the paper, so if we leave it alone, then it would go-
What we did is we adjusted the five percent increase, and then the wage adjustment would be on top of.
Right, because I think that's the cleanest way to do it anyways, because if the article gets defeated, you didn't put the five percent on top of what wasn't there.
Right.
So you do the increase, the COLA, and then if it's a three dollar, you put it on top of. Thank you, Neil. Anybody else?
Neil had mentioned, I'm sorry, Diana Dickinson, Dills Way, I don't even know if I said that last time. Neil had mentioned clarifying why this is needed. Is that something that you can add, then, to this article, explaining why we're asking the town people to do that? Because I think it's-
It would be in the purpose of the mailer.
Oh, it'll be in there, okay.
Yeah, it'd be in the purpose of the mailer. This is two years old, but it'd be in the purpose.
You folks didn't clarify why it is that we have so much money in Article Eleven, as well as the forty-five thousand dollars I mentioned in the budget. How does that all fit together?
So the forty-five thousand that Neil is asking about, the fifteen, well, let me get to that page first, let's see, I'll take a stab at it anyways. The on-call bonus, the thirty thousand eight hundred dollars, that was a proposed increase from three hundred, is that what it is? It's a three hundred dollar stipend that the plow drivers get to be on-call for basically six months, which doesn't even equate to anything, really, let's be real. It increases it to a stipend for twenty-five hundred dollars a person, which it will not compound with the fifty-seven hundred Mr. Campana was talking about. It'll be twenty-five hundred standalone, moving forward. There'll be proration and stuff, I mean, if somebody leaves halfway through the winter, they're not gonna get a twenty-five dollar check, et cetera, okay?
So what you're saying is that this is going to different people?
It's going to the same people that would be getting a three dollar an hour adjustment. Am I correct in saying that?
But not getting the COLA?
No.
They would get the COLA if that article goes through.
All the same people.
All the same people.
And then the fifteen thousand?
Twenty-five hundred, oh, the fifteen thousand, that one, I'm, it said the town office circled, that was a fifty cent raise.
That was a fifty cent raise from before.
Right.
So if everything passes, could you tell us what these folks are getting now, and what they would get if all of these articles pass?
We can get to that, but I can tell you, generally, not enough.
I mean, we could do that, but you have to understand, too, the twenty-five hundred dollars is to be on-call and give up your life from April fifteenth to November fifteenth, in case you have a little bit of snow.
Right.
They have to go out sand, salt, plow, every single time, they give up all, and Saturday, Sunday holidays, so it's different.
I understand that.
The stipend to be on-call.
If that could be clarified, either in the finance committee's position, or what you folks write, because right now, there are so many different pots from which money is coming for the same people, that it's, number one, confusing, and number two, not clear. And it needs to be made clear as to why we're going to do this and what the final outcome will be. Thank you.
Noted. Noted, or do we want to discuss it? Anybody else? Where?
Lori Davis, Buxton School. I just want to make something clear. You're saying at least three different amounts of money are coming through here.
If everything passes.
If everything passes, the taxpayers aren't getting that, but on top of that, I heard somebody say they would have to be on-call. Part of people's jobs are to do specific duties. Everybody who works has a job, and they have requirements. My husband's on-call twenty-four-seven. So when somebody says to me they have to be on-call for six months, and they're getting paid for it, it's part of their job, and we have to remember, these are all jobs.
Brent Dickinson, Dills Way. To that point, I don't know of anyone making twenty bucks an hour that's on-call. I mean, if they get there overtime, they're exempt from a lot of the rules of service that most CDL drivers are required to maintain. So, yeah, if they're not making thirty-plus an hour, we're not paying them enough.
Anybody else? Tom?
Excuse me, trying to clarify. This on-call has been existing, it's not new to this budget, correct?
No, it's just the amount's changing.
Yeah, so, you know, it's not, this year, we're gonna give it on-call bonus.
Correct.
It's been existed for a long time.
It's been three hundred consistently.
Because it's actually, it's actually in the policy, so to speak, so it could be reprimanded for not being available.
And taken away.
It has nothing to do with bonus that existed just for this winter, that was to try to recruit people.
Retain.
That actually ends at the end of April.
Correct, yeah. The fifty-seven hundred does, yes.
And we did that in lieu of the regular three hundred.
Correct, yeah, we didn't compound them. Correct, yeah, we didn't compound them. Yep. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to Article, again, as written, Article twelve, fire department increases. Chief Hart?
Mark Hart, Fire Department. The six percent pay increase that we're asking for is to get our members more in line with the current salaries that are out there. Again, like all departments, we're just trying to keep the people we have. We have a lot of the money invested in the people, the town. And I would hate to see them, that seems to be the thing to do these days, is to jump ship and go to somewhere else for the three dollar an hour raise, or someone who's going to give you a sign-on bonus, a ten thousand dollars, or something like that, it's pretty, you know, for the younger people, it seems like, that don't have a lot of time in this, it's pretty hard to resist that going. So, we're just trying to keep who we have. I do have, and my apologies, because when we talked the other night, I was, I said six percent, and was all in favor, and Chairman Hippler had emailed me, and just so you guys hear, are the ones, and I just didn't give the best, but this shows the proper six percent, not the crazy numbers, because we were asked to sharpen our pencils, so.
Thank you.
I did.
So these numbers represent the six percent across the board now?
Six percent for the initial bump, and then after that, it was just figured in at three percent. But that all depends on what happens every year with the budget. The steps were created by Chief Vazina, years, what, three years ago? And unfortunately, when they were made, there was no, they were made, and that was it. There was nothing in there, there was no procedure, policy, anything put forth on how people got a raise. So, this year, we just started to do evaluations. So, we have evaluations, but if you get a great evaluation, then what do you, where does that go? So, you know, I think we're going to leave that up to whoever the next chief is, and we're going to leave that up, I think, to whoever the next board is. And, because that's a bigger problem than just myself or the chief are going to be able to figure out. So, the figures moving forward, again, are three percent, but that's just as a placeholder. You know what I'm saying? It's not, it's not saying that they're going to get that. Because I, I don't, I don't know how you move ahead, I guess, is my thing. There's no procedure on how you move ahead, yet, in that. So that's more in line, Ricky, with than the other one that was, that we had. And again, my apologies, I thought, I didn't realize that the other article was just for a COLA raise, I thought that was for everyone going across the board, so.
Well, I appreciate the looking into it, I do.
But again, it's just, and it's not a lot, most employees ended up getting, it's around, maybe two dollars, I think, two dollars and change. But it's just helping the, it's, again, helping retain the people who we have.
Yeah, they're all roughly six. There is one that is only three, that I notice, and it was, again-
And it could be just a, but it could be absolutely my error, because I'm not very able to sell it all, so.
I believe it was for Rebecca. She's at about three percent.
Rebecca is actually no longer on there. That actually is, yeah, the bottom, she needs to be taken out.
Is that Caroline?
That's now Caroline.
So it's still three percent, though?
The three percent, because she already came in at a higher rate. I couldn't hire her at-
There's the answer, isn't there?
So she was hired at a higher rate, so she's getting less of a increase compared to everybody else.
Okay, and maybe I missed it, but the steps back, can you address that?
The steps going back, I decided, one thing I decided to do was, or proposed anyways, was to eliminate three of the steps on there. So you go, now it's just one to seven, instead of one to ten. And really, honestly, that was out of ease, because steps one through three weren't, didn't even pertain anymore, they were down to sixteen dollars an hour, and there's no, like, so just kind of chopped them right off, and then started at step four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, so.
All right. Any other comments from the board?
I guess before we had, we were talking nine, ten, and they were excluding full-time. And now we are including full-time. At five percent, and this is to reflect six percent. So I would, I guess, my gut says eliminate twelve, six is, give everybody five.
Well, if you're eliminating twelve, you're eliminating, you're giving people, just my people, just the cost of living, and that's it. You're not adjusting their wage.
Because this is a wage adjustment.
That's a wage adjustment, is twelve.
Then it shouldn't be six percent, because we moved, we just added five percent to full-time.
Well, you added, right, but-
We just did the same one article about.
You just did the same thing in Article eleven, DPW, you were giving three dollars an hour.
Well, we knew that going in, we knew our options were, we're going to include DPW or not, and we decided to. Now we're-
I don't, I don't understand what you're saying.
Maybe put it differently. Given that we have included, which was not an option before we started talking about it just half an hour ago, we have included full-time fire.
How come you didn't include full-time fire? That's what I want to know.
I don't know, this was just put in front of us. So, given that we had-
You had it.
I had it when we started talking about it, which is a whole other problem that I want to talk about, but.
Okay.
Now, full-time fire is at five percent. What do you propose the increase should be, in Article twelve?
In Article twelve? The six percent?
So, the DPW, what, a dollar?
A dollar amount versus-
Dollar adjustment, right. So you just said that roughly, these numbers are, what, two, two-fifty, roughly?
Yeah, they're between two dollars and two-seventy-five for most people.
All right, so let's call it two-fifty is a rough number. Would, that would probably be more apt on here, rather than, say, six percent.
I mean, if you guys want to put a dollar amount in there, then it's just hard, because I'm not, unlike Highway, is adding it to their base, right? To their base thing. I'm not, I'm trying to add it, I'm trying to add it to different employees that make all different kinds of money. So that's why it's very hard to really put a dollar amount, I guess you can average it out, and put an average dollar amount.
Right, and I think that's what Rick was after, was two dollars and fifty cents, and worded similar to what was above, versus a percent and a percent, it's going to be confusing.
You still get to your number, it's just, but yeah.
So, I mean, if you want to put a dollar amount there, that's fine, I just-
They'll just have to say an average of, though.
Yeah, we just have to call average.
Or average of two-fifty, or whatever.
To make the numbers, like you said, for the different qualifications and different steps.
But I'm all about simplifying things, and making it easier for the public, and trying to be as transparent as possible.
Well, six percent of thirty dollars would be a buck eighty.
Which nobody's there, as I can see.
Right, so, I mean, just, for example, that's-
And if it's twenty-five dollars, it'd be a buck and a half.
Yeah, so. So if you average it out, probably two-fifty would be, probably, if anything, it would be on the high side, maybe.
Yeah, that'd be on the high side.
I was just, I was throwing a number to the wall, that's all I was doing. I wasn't, I didn't calculate any of it. If it's two-twenty-five, or two, or two-seventeen, or whatever.
I just feel, to be fair to my, the department members, you know, the town is, is, you know, doing the COLA increases, and, you know, we just, again, similar thing, people are leaving and losing people, and if I lose a person, it costs thousands and thousands of dollars to train someone new, to get gear for them to fit. I mean, it's just a lot of money.
So I understand your percentage problem, but is a dollar, is a dollar amount more pliable?
I guess, you know, not really, because we had, you know, we had articles that did not include fire, and so then we had one just for them. I don't, you know.
That was going to get into the same finish line.
And then we moved them in here to say, let's make it cleaner, let's make, you know, give this better odds to pass, so, we either need to have one similar to DPW that is looking for some small addition, or exclude it. Because that's how it was coming in today, they were on their own island, and now they're not. So why, like, I don't know why we would discuss-
I wasn't on any island before, because I wasn't included.
But I think it was forgotten.
I was forgotten, and the other things, I wasn't even on the island that you're talking about.
No, you were, that's what I'm saying, you were not on here, you were off on an island in Article twelve.
Yeah, it was, because we had part-time in on Article nine, ten, and on Article twelve, we had the full-time. So they were covered, and now we've put all the full-time into Article-
The bucket.
But, but, but what you're, but what you're, so, you have Article eleven with the DPW increases, and you're saying that's the same as your Article ten?
No, I'm talking about fire. Full-time fire-
Correct.
-had Article twelve. They were excluded from nine, ten. We've now added full-time fire into nine slash ten. So, we've covered-
Correct.
We've covered eighty percent of what you asked for already in nine, ten.
When we talked, we talked about the wage increase, we talked about the difference of COLA and wage adjustment, and I think Benji quoted, or said something about, the percentage pool pertains to everybody. Because if you take them out of that pool, and you have them stand here, everybody but them could get a COLA. And I think it was, COLA was one bucket, and the wage adjustment to increase the next part was a second step that they had to kind of sell on their own, as the wage adjustment part, because it's two different things.
Correct, it's two different, two different things.
And I think we, if we were going to look at it that way, we forgot them the first time.
Correct.
We forgot them in the bucket of money, because we included everybody but them.
Which, that was written very particularly to exclude them, because it was very particular.
But you have-
I don't know, again, it was a mistake. There's some amount of communication between the department heads, which is apparently not happening.
But I think a mistake was admitted to. A mistake was that they weren't in there. They weren't included, it wasn't intentional. It was a mistake to, now we've included them as cost of living, DPW's got a wage adjustment, and they've got a wage adjustment. I think that's what we talked about way back, when we talked about the pool being a wage adjustment, two wage adjustments and a cost of living bucket.
Correct. So that's what I'm asking for, I guess.
I think a dollar amount per hour is easier.
Oh, yeah.
Correct, and if that makes things cleaner, then the, average that out, and it's probably, it's probably closer to two dollars than it is two-fifty, but, so we can figure that out. And I could tell you, too, that, like, ninety percent of the fire department is people here in town. It's taxpayers in town, so. People who live in town, work in town, respond in town.
I guess, aside from the percentage slash money for a moment, you shaded a box out in this.
That's group one, because we're no longer hiring anybody, group one, and there's no more basics in group one. We had, Cody Lemay was a basic in group one, but he took CPAT passes, so he moved into group two. So there's no more, we can't hire group one, so. That's why that box is shaded, there's, no one will ever be there again.
All right, so I guess we roll back to my, that answers my question on that. Okay. I guess the board's, right, wrong, or different?
Well, I'm all right with it, I understand Sam's question, because, and I, I guess, I don't know why, none of us asked a question before, but it was very specifically written, part-time fire and rescue. It should just say fire and rescue.
That's not forgetting somebody, that's excluded, I think.
Right. So.
Neil?
Neil Kirk, I'd just like to make sure that I understand this. When I looked at the printed form that you handed out, the warrant articles, there was a six percent increase for fire department people. The way the chief is talking now, that would be eleven percent, because you've added five percent under the cost of living article, and now you're talking about adding six percent under Article twelve. So we've gone from five percent to eleven percent, is that?
I believe you are understanding it correctly.
That's the discussion, yes.
Tom?
I'll be very brief, because you've already talked through this, I think, that it makes more sense to have a dollar amount in this one, I think, because people are going to get confused by the multiple percentages, whereas it's pretty clear-cut with the highway department. You know, you get the percentage, which is the COLA, and then you have an adjustment because of the need to keep your department employees. I think if you follow that same pattern here, you probably have better luck of making the articles clear to the public.
Yeah, I'm all about clarity. Phil?
Yeah. Bill Anderson, East Road. I certainly understand the DPW department increase, the wage increase, because we've got vacancies. I don't know how many, maybe it's five, maybe, whatever, it's five or six. How many vacancies do we have in the full-time fire department right now?
One is going to be in the next weeks.
Okay, currently not, okay. So, that's, where they would be getting a, they're currently staffed, as of this moment, and they're getting a five percent COLA increase, although it's, COLA's really three point two, so they're getting a bump there. And I don't see the need for it, if they're, if it's, we don't have people, we're not hemorrhaging people out of the fire department. Now, we might, down to come, but right now, we aren't. So I don't know why we're raising eleven percent for people where we don't have vacancies, unlike the highway department.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else speak to it? Frank?
Frank Campana. All the discussion of pay raises, I still hear nothing mentioned at all about what benefits the taxpayers of the town provide the town employees. I don't care if it's insurance, I don't care if it's comp time, I don't care if it, well, maybe comp time might be a little different, just sick days, family days, everything else. You know, that has to add up to something, and it probably has to add up to a fair amount, at least, in dollars. Never, it's never mentioned. Never, it's never mentioned.
Anybody else want to speak? Frank?
Brent Dickinson, Bill's way, do we know off the top of our head the cost per week for the insurance that they do receive as a town employee?
To the employee, or to the town, or combined?
Employee. Because some places, you know, people are paying a hundred bucks a week, some people are paying, you know, eight hundred bucks a month.
Mm-hmm.
So if we're giving them benefits, they could be getting crap benefits, that they're paying out, you know, a lot of money for.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, okay, yeah, they get benefits, are they good benefits? We don't know.
I guess my, I'll, I'll, is, is it ten percent, or is it seven percent on retirement?
No, you, you have, no, you have, um, the employee pays ten percent of the eligible package, and if your other half can provide us with proof of insurance, then you pay them fifty-five hundred dollars for the year not to take insurance.
Alright, so the insurance, though, is, is ten percent?
Ten percent, that the employee pays.
What about the retirement, is that included in that?
No, the employer, no, it's different.
Alright, so it's ten percent of the pri, of the, the premium?
What is the premium?
Depends on what package you mean.
Depends on what package you get, family, single?
Depends on what- It's not apple samples.
Couple, yeah, um, and what is retirement contribution?
And that's different levels too.
Right.
Police and fire are different than their, other town employees.
Alright, well, let's, let's go back to, let's go back to the group two fire, since that's kinda what we're talking about. Emp, employee contribution.
I was gonna say, I know it's seven percent for us.
Okay, seven percent for group one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's gotta be probably ten, do you guys?
I'm not sure, I know we have, we have a couple of employees who take the buyout.
Eleven point eight, twelve, okay. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, he was the, they were, she was giving, um, retirement.
Right, so, so from the back, it was eleven point eight for the group two, which is police and fire, which is the, huh?
Just fire.
Just fire, excuse me. Yeah, so that's eleven point eight for a group two contributing member, which is the CPAT qualified. The group ones are seven percent, uh, from the employee. Um, ten percent of the, um,
Health insurance.
Health insurance premiums is paid by the employee. The town does not, the town does not pay for dental, the town does not pay for short-term, the town does not pay for long-term, the town does not pay for vision, is there a vision?
It's part of your health.
Part of the health insurance, alright, so that's, that's under that bucket.
You can go over two years.
Alright, um, so.
But we have talked about dental, long-term and short-term, even this year, coming this year.
Correct, but we just, we don't have it currently today, from page J.
No, but you can buy it through Aflac, a lot of them.
Yeah, a lot of, I mean, we, again, but that's employee pay supplemental, the town does not offer that.
Thank you, so it sounds like a substandard healthcare plan, so they're gonna have to pay out more than someone making thirty or forty dollars an hour somewhere else that has a better package.
Potentially.
Possibly.
Thank you, potentially, yeah.
So if you're gonna go to a dollar amount, as in, you did a DPW, the number will have to change, but you have to determine your dollar amount.
Right.
So, just, just so you-
Come up to the, come, come up to the mic, please, thank you.
Just so you know, you, you mentioned short-term and long-term disability insurance, um, we had one of our employees get stuck with that, and the town doesn't offer that insurance, so, after that, I myself got personal insurance for that, and I paid two hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-two cents a month out of my pocket for disability insurance.
Thank you. So back to the number in the article, in general.
Well, takes, just take six percent of their current wage, whatever it is, if it's.
That's, it's not that easy, everybody's at a different rate, right?
Right, so I think it'd be easier if we're gonna,
If you're gonna give a dollar.
If we're gonna, I mean, if we're gonna reduce it, just put a dollar amount on it, whatever the dollar amount may be. Whether it's a dollar, a dollar fifty, whatever it may be.
Dollars, whatever, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, and then those will move it up to wherever, and what have you. I understand they're getting five percent, which is eight percent of the, eight percent of the goal in that. I guess we gotta figure that out. So I guess I don't know what the-
Just using the three that are highlighted on the old sheet, it ranges from a dollar forty-five to a dollar sixty-five.
Of move?
Six percent.
Six percent.
Oh.
These three highlighted.
Okay.
Dollar forty-five, a dollar fifty-four, and a dollar sixty-five.
And that's on the, that's on the group one?
It's on the, group one.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, just the three that are highlighted.
Alright, you wanna figure it out for group two?
Let's just say that's three out of eight.
Yes, that's three out of eight, yeah. But I guess, I guess before she goes down that road, um, is that something that, that the board would entertain for a number, if there was an average?
Just take the average.
Say it's a dollar fifty, is that, is that something the board's even gonna entertain?
Yeah.
Question?
As a wage adjustment.
As a wage adjustment, right. And still being in Article nine point five. Just, kinda, again, I don't really wanna waste your time if not.
I don't.
Okay.
I would be a no, but one of five.
Like, I came into today thinking they had been specially carved out, and that was gonna be, making, that was gonna be why, I was putting them in the bucket, so,
There's standard one. Okay.
I, I don't love the idea of having.
That's separate.
Right, and maybe to echo, I think it was Bill, who said, calling out, you know, who, we, we, we're trying to address DPW because lack of people, severe need to hire people, we don't see that at PD, we don't see that at fire.
Currently.
Sure. So, yeah, I think I would also be a no. Because I feel like we've addressed it.
So what's the, uh, overtime cost? If, if, if people leave, I mean, there's only eight employees down there.
Yeah, I couldn't tell you.
So if, if two leave, you still have to cover twenty-four-seven shifts, which, it was an uproar about how much insur, how much overtime we spent
Last year.
when somebody was away. I'm just saying, I mean, it's, it's easy to sit here and say no.
So it's a roll, roll back to a retention, or anything?
I'm just, yeah, well, I'm just gonna, i- it is what it is, I'm just saying, you, you grouped one together for a pool.
Right.
And now, you knew there was a wage adjustment on both parts, because it says it right there in the article.
Mm-hmm.
So, a wage adjustment for one, I totally understand, but you could be in the same boat next week, and they can all go, because he shared a help wanted ad in the next town over, and they can go for three dollars plus more an hour, starting at twenty-nine.
Mm-hmm.
With no fire cert.
Right.
Just EMT and see you later. You know, and I get what towns are paying, and, you know, I just, I think we need to think about some of that personally, and let the people decide if they wanna wage increase.
Thinking more retention than?
I'm thinking more retention, I mean, twenty-five dollars an hour to do the same thing and try to save lives. I mean, I don't know, I just, my dad was a fireman and a police chief. So I know this is public service work. And not many people are getting into it.
No. No, places are hurting.
So the group two numbers run from a dollar twenty-six to two dollars and eighty-eight cents. And I'll read them off, a dollar twenty-six, a dollar twenty-nine, a dollar thirty-three, a dollar forty-two, two dollars four cents, two dollars eighty-eight cents.
It sounds like an average of a dollar fifty.
The group one.
It's above, it's above average on most, obviously there's a couple that is way below, but, the ones that, the percentage is below might catch them ones up. I, I'm always in favor of, you know, we, we have to put our recommendation, we, we put if we recommend it on, and then the finance weighs their opinion in, which, you know, has some stout, um, so I don't, you know, unless it's like trying, a couple of articles ago, trying to, articles ago, trying to weed out, there was two options, we needed to pick one, I, I'm alright with putting one up, you know, you, I've even put up some of the popular ones as a department head, and at least I get a chance to put it up there and let the voters decide, I guess, so.
You don't have to recommend, you cannot recommend an article.
We cannot recommend.
Yeah, we cannot recommend, still, still propose your article.
You cannot recommend an article and still send it forward.
I still, you know, don't wanna, if, if the chief wants to put it on there, then, put it on there, I wished he'd have picked the number, I do understand he did pick a percentage and, and, but.
Well, I mean, we can always defer this to next week. Say, hey, that we kinda shift to this live today, go come up with a number.
Yeah, I'd rather the department had come up with the number than us, but it, it.
I mean, I could come up with a dollar amount, I mean, that's pretty easy, there's only eight people.
Right.
So I get eight numbers average.
Yep.
I mean, I could come up with a dollar amount, I just came up with a percentage.
No, and that's fine.
It's not, I wasn't adding to the base, I was adding to, like, a bunch of-
I, I think a dollar amount would, would help you, I, I think, and, uh, I just, as one member, it'd feel better if you picked that dollar amount.
Sure, absolutely.
By the number she's been putting forth, it looks like a dollar fifty to about cover it, but, see what you come up with next week?
Can, can I ask for two different numbers, though? And what I mean by that is, is to hold to your percentage within, within, with a dollar number, and to come up with another one that would meet the six percent that you requested, not being in, not being in the COLA pool. What would the number be to get to that six percent that you requested? You know what I mean? No? So, so that y- your membership gets the six percent if they get this, this adjustment article and the COLA article. Whatever that number is, re, needs to be represented in, if, if the, if the COLA passes at five percent.
Yep.
What would your membership need in dollars to get to that six percent you, um, presented? Okay, thank you. So if you could do, do them both, I'd appreciate it.
For next week?
Yeah.
So when, when we send this out,
Yep.
and maybe I'll wait for Ben to get back, but, uh, like, they, they all include the purpose that
Mm-hmm, the finance committee.
we're gonna write, and then the finance committee recommendation, and it includes the vote breakdown of the finance committee in there.
Yep.
Um, how does the board feel about including our vote breakdowns? So I assume most are gonna be unanimous, but, like this one, if it goes three-two, yeah.
If they are split, it'd be nice, yeah, yeah. I don't think it'd be too difficult to do that.
No, but you can always not, and, and not recommend it, but with the vote.
Sure, but if it's recommended three-two, that's.
No, but the three-two vote would still be recommended.
It, it shows the board is kinda split on it, it, as, as the finance committee was split on their vote, type thing. I don't see why we couldn't do that.
Never, but.
Huh?
I said, we haven't done that, but we've also never not recommended an article either.
No. Right, right, so, alright, so we'll, we'll table that until next week, when, when, when Mr. Warr comes back, that work? Alright, uh, anybody else on twelve, before we move on? It would be a dead horse. Okay, we'll move on to thirteen.
This is worded a little bit different, they're identical wording to thirteen, fourteen, and seventeen, except for your money value and your department, they're worded all the same.
Thirteen, fourteen, and?
Seventeen, thirteen is full-time chief, fourteen's full-time library, and seventeen's full-time building inspector.
Okay.
They're all worded identically, except for the dollar amounts and the department.
Okay.
I changed, we changed them around so they'd be consistent.
Alright, so Article thirteen, uh, it's to make the, um, part-time fire chief, um, that, that the town has, um, approved into a full-time position. Uh, Chief Art? Um, so, this, this number represents in addition to the, and I know I asked this last week, but it, it represents, oop, he's got numbers. Okay. So I know that-
I know you asked for it.
Yeah, so last week I asked what the, what the actual total number was.
Correct. Correct.
For the salary line, and I'm sure this also includes the benefits and retirement and everything that comes along with it, so. Okay. You, you wanna read it, or you want me to read it?
Oh, I think you can, because I think I just gave my last topic.
It's different from what's on ours, what he gave you is not the same that ours is written.
It's more. Did, did you work with Beth to figure this one out?
Uh, yeah, this was.
She stepped out, of course.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Yes.
Cause it, there is a di-
Beth gave me this, so.
Okay, cause there is a difference in the number. Oh, no.
No.
No, it's not, same. Same.
No, what you're looking at as a top paragraph is the article that came through from the Board of Fire Words.
Oh, okay, that's different.
For consistency purposes, which we've all harped on consistency and equal, is, they're all written the same way.
Okay, I get it, alright.
You're, you're taking a part-time position and moving it to full-time.
So the intent is this, is still the same?
The intent is there.
And the numbers haven't changed?
No.
Okay, just some verbiage a little bit, okay. Alright, so the, um, twenty-twenty-four, forty weeks, which is that nine months, um, the proposed full-time salary would be eighty-one thousand six hundred dollars. Um, retirement and taxes included in that eighty-one-six would be a total cost to the taxpayer for nine months of a hundred and seven thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars. For twenty-twenty-five, which would be a full calendar year, twelve-month commitment, the proposed salary would be a hundred and six thousand eighty dollars, and with taxes and retirement, it would be a hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars cost to the taxpayer. I think that's accurate representation?
Yeah, that's the, there would be, the part-time salary would come out of the, would come out of that budget.
Right, but it'd be utilized for that.
Right, the part-time salary would be utilized towards.
The full-time salary.
The full-time salary.
Okay.
So the fifty-five thousand one fifty-one, and the, um, seventy-one thousand six ninety-six on the fifty-two week.
It's nine months versus twelve.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Would, would come out of that, because that's, would no longer be
Mm-hmm.
in the budget.
Understood. And, and I guess, I, a question I do have is, how was the, for the full year, the one oh six eighty, how was that derived?
Uh, when Chief Olson was here, we surveyed, um, towns that were near our size and population, um, and that's where we came up with the figure for that.
Okay. This one, how it was derived, that's all. Alright, um, any board members want to comment?
That was, and, and it was, uh, um, this was approved through the, uh, the Board of Fire Words.
Board of Fire Words, yeah, yeah.
I just wanna, I guess, say the same thing I said last time, is, I, I'd rather see an up to amount, because we haven't hired a full-time fire chief. And again, if, uh, Chief Rourke hits mega bucks and isn't interested by that time, and we have to hire someone with zero experience, I don't believe.
They should make that right out of the gate.
Right, so, and I'm not gonna have to change it, Lou not being here all night, but, but, uh,
But I guess I don't-
I don't like, I don't like, I'd rather see it say something in effect that, and I know that would change the other articles too, so that's why I'm, I'm gonna throw it out there and not ask to actually have anything happen, but I gotta say my piece is, I'd rather s, be mentioned these full-time positions, and this is the cost of it.
I think you would mention that in the purpose in the mailer, and the reason I say is, because I don't think you can say an up to amount, because it doesn't, not, not in the fact of the, like, like when you buy the plow truck, right? You, you're putting that money into the capital reserve fund, you could go up to, right? But where this one is, um, I'm gonna go with the same luck I have, he's not gonna win the mega bucks. Um, sorry, but this, but, um, so, so, you know, the potential is there, I don't know how you'd write that. Anything's possible, you're right, but I think that would be in the purpose more so than the actual article, my only thought.
I, I guess what bothers me the most is this, you know, this, this salary was picked, we're the ones that are gonna hire and present a salary, and the salary is picked by, not us.
I think it was picked as an, it was picked as an average, I don't think you have to go to that.
Okay.
Right.
We don't have to go to that?
This, this, that was, that-
Yeah, I mean, you guys are gonna end up going through a process, a full-time chief, you guys are gonna-
Yeah, I mean, you guys are gonna end up going through a process, it's a full-time chief, you guys are gonna go through a process anyways.
Exactly.
So at that time, you guys could put whatever you wanna put in there for a salary range.
Right.
When you, when you advertise.
This is, the way this award doesn't marry us to that amount, then?
No.
No.
We'd have to find the money from somewhere, if we went over it.
If we went over it.
But, but I think Ben's saying, if we were under it.
But if we're under, it's still bu- in the budget for that.
Right.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's just gonna raise the bud, I, I guess, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
I don't like it this way.
So, we spent quite a lot of time talking about this last week, and I feel like we were roughly split, um, to not include it at all. Um, but, and then kind of deferred to, well, let's let the public talk about it, so I do wanna hear from them, but just to set the stage a little bit. Board of Fire wards voted to, or asked the town to dissolve the Board of Fire wards. The town agreed. Those obligations will defer to the Board of Selectmen, uh, after this next election. There you go. Uh, and so one, i- it is a moving piece that I'm not comfortable with. Um, switching something so critical to the operation as this board has to absorb that with potentially three new people as well. So I'm not in favor of this right now. I'd rather.
Defer it a year.
Switch thing, yeah, and, and give it a year to really mull it over with, you know, the board, the new Board of Selectmen, um, understanding how that system works, and then make a decision, and it may be the same decision.
I didn't say it quite as eloquently as you did last week, Salem, but I was of the same opinion. Defer this and evaluate for a year and then see where we're at. But I did also say that I wanted to hear from the public tonight about what they thought.
Well, I'll get off the podium, so if someone wants to talk about it, instead of me, I'll get the space there.
Anybody like to speak to Article thirteen for the full-time fire chief? Tom?
Several things. First, I think the time has come. Previous chief worked through three budgets, three or four, uh, getting us up to the point where we have a full-time department. And, uh, I think a full-time department, but remaining with a part-time chief, doesn't make sense. It's, it's time to move and take that next step. Uh, the other thing as far as in, involving the public, if this goes on the ballot, that's what the deliberative session is all about. This will no doubt get a lot of discussion, pros and cons of deliberative session, and then the public will make up their mind as to whether or not this is something that they, they want to go with. Uh, so my personal opinion is that it's, it's time to make the change, but that's not finance committee, and it's, uh, not what will come out perhaps of the deliberative session. But I think that, that putting it on gives the public input that you're looking for. That's what the deliberative session is for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one other thing. Comparable salaries, this is very similar to what we're paying the police chief. If you look at the budget, it's very similar to what we're paying the police chief.
Uh, Brent Dickinson, Dilway. So, I don't think it is comparable to what the chief of police is making. I could be wrong on that. We're looking at twenty twenty-five at one thirty-nine, hundred and thirty-nine thousand for, for a fire chief?
Total.
Right, this, the whole package. I haven't seen anything other than the budget for the chief's pay. If, this is not the to- total package that he's getting, the one oh eight, the one oh six.
It would be the new retirement and taxes, yes.
Okay. So what's the average firefighter ma- making out of the eight people down there? Per hour?
Uh, twenty.
Seven or eight.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
We wanna pay the chief sixty-six, eighty-two? That's, uh, you wanna create resentment and people leaving, overpay the chief? So I could say on that one.
Thank you. Laura?
I have a couple of questions. When the fire department budget was proposed, we saw that currently they're working as a full-time person, and then.
Is this Laura, is this finance committee?
This is Laurie Davis.
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, you said we, when we see, when we saw that presentation.
Well, it's been presented to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, alright.
We're talking to the Board of Selectmen.
Just wanna make sure we're on the same side.
No, no, not on that at all.
Okay.
Anyway, then there is the fire chief salary that has been paid in the past. If I've got my budgets and all my things presented so far. Going forward, if you have a full-time fire chief, does that mean we're not going to have a salary over here for this other person, and is there not going to be overtime at this point? 'Cause currently, we have him working as a person over here, also as a chief, and there's a lot of overtime going in there. So I'm curious about the overtime. The other thing is, I'm very fond of my emergency services departments, but we are entering into an era that is uncharted waters for wear. And that is, we have gone from a Board of Fire wards to the Board of Selectmen. We have some issues on the Board of Fire wards, 'cause I've been to their meetings, they're not always warm and fuzzy and joyful. And I think we have some kinks to work out before we start planning too permanent of anything. I think we need to test the waters a little bit, but I'm concerned about the finances. If you could clear that up for me, I'd appreciate it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I'll take a stab at it. The, um, as it stands right now, uh, the Board of Fire wards, uh, after, um, Chief Olson, um, departed, um, voted to have, uh, Mark Rourke be the acting fire chief. Uh, Mark was on the floor as a, um, medic firefighter. He is one of the eight full-timers we have, so the Board of Fire has put him to the acting fire chief position. Um, and, oh, I lost my train of thought. And with, and with that, they came up with an hourly rate for him, which obviously he's fulfilling his obligations for his shifts still. Um, so his payroll is coming from the payroll line for full-time, uh, because he's still a, a retirement, you know, contributor. Um, and that, that fire chief line this year, correct me if I'm wrong, was utilized for, uh, Chief Olson, the interim, um, chief that we had from, uh, MRI. So I don't believe that that chief's line is being utilized to fulfill any of your salary currently. Is that correct?
Uh, no, it is, I believe.
It?
Yeah.
No, it is not.
It's not.
No, you're coming straight from the payroll line, so, okay. Does that clarify some of it? Most of it?
So when you don't know who's going to be.
If you could, if it's gonna be, probably gonna be a little bit back and forth, so if you could.
No offense, I'm going to pretend you're going to be the fire chief, 'cause I don't know how that's being done. Um, so, when he's the fire chief, 'cause I don't know how that plays out, does that mean he's strictly the fire chief and then this other slot is filled by somebody else?
If, if the, if he were, if he were to accept the chief's position.
Yep.
And it was to stay as a part-time, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, um, Mr. Rourke would have to retire.
Okay.
To come out of the contributing, um, membership, because the, it's a part-time position.
Okay.
So he cannot work full-time anymore and be strictly the chief. So he would have to retire with the state of New Hampshire, and then he is only allowed to work twenty-five hours a week as a retired, previously contributing member.
Like Bob Vazina.
Correct, but Vazina was a little bit higher. I think he could work thirty, but the law has recently changed again, and now they've dropped it to twenty-five. He could go work for Walmart for as many hours as he wants, but because we are a group two contributing municipality, he can all work for us for twenty-five.
But if this goes full-time.
Mm-hmm.
He is a full-time chief, the slot that is, he's currently doing over here.
Would be open. Would be open.
Correct, yes.
That's where I'm getting confused.
Yes, the full, the full-time position fulfilling forty-two hours a week on the floor, filling the, you know, responding to calls, would be an opening, yes.
Okay, so he's not going to be wearing two hats and running around and splitting.
If the full-time position were to go through and he was, and he was the selected candidate, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. If you wanna come up, state your name, state your address, or who you're representing, if it's yourself.
I'm representing Killian Donnelly, just himself, nobody on the board.
Alright, there you go.
Sixty-five North Stark. I'm just up here to say, like, this is a twenty-four-hour, three sixty-five department, other than the highway during the winter. The only ones that are twenty-four. I think a full-time chief would be, uh, very woo of the town, especially, um, from an operational standpoint, right? You, you hire a part-time candidate, that's twenty-five hours a week. That's not enough. He goes on one overnight call, there's pretty much a day he can't come in. Um, as a full-time, he'd be salaried, so he can come out every night if need be, um. And it would be the same, 'cause it's a salary, and I think that is a way better bargain, I think, for the town, the taxpayers, and moving forward, and. Yeah.
So I do wanna bring up two, three, two, two or three things, um, just as food for thought. So, if the full-time article were to pass, and as, as Act Chief Rourke stated, it was to be put back out as a, uh, it was reposted, and there was another process. And we were to hire someone similar to, um, Chief Moore's, um, you know, uh, background, out of state, the, the, the group two rules don't apply. They can work as many hours as they want, if we hire an out-of-state. Um, if we hire an in-state retired candidate, obviously it's twenty-five hours, because the New Hampshire retirement system. Now, with that, um, the board, if, when, when the board takes over, May thirteenth.
March.
March, well, I'm, I'm pushing to myself, two more months, I don't wanna do that. March twelfth, um, March thirteenth, excuse me, when the, when this, when this board takes over, um, a couple of decisions are gonna have to be made real quick. Is because you have him as an acting chief still working full-time, um, so what, what becomes of that position? Do you keep it status quo for a year? Um, and again, he fulfill, he can backfill shifts, and again, nothing, nothing against you, but you're gonna have to fill shifts, 'cause we got, you say you have a candidate leaving, one of our employees is leaving, so there's gotta be shifts to fill. So that's overtime hours for him. So I don't know if, at the end of the day, that, that the current model that the fire department is in is going to work. That's all, that's all I'm, I'm trying to say. Again, I, I could go either way with this, um, but, but I just wanted to let you guys know that if you say, yes, it's gonna be a part-time fire chief, then are you gonna hire a part-time fire chief in that one-year tenure to find out, hey, by the way, yeah, we really do need a full-time, and then you've already hired a part-time and/or asked, um, you know, Mr. Rourke to retire? And now you say, well, no, we're gonna go full-time next year. It's just, it's just some food for thought, that's all. I'm not, I'm not trying to diss, persuading in which way, it's just when, when March thirteenth occurs, what, what's the plan of this board moving forward? That's all. And I don't, I mean, 'cause like I said, I mean, you know, you got, um, Jay's position's a little bit different, I mean, he's down drivers, yes, but, you know, with the fire department, you have to have two on. So you have to backfill the positions regardless, and the, the way it currently is, is, you know, Act Chief Rourke can ref- can backfill it, 'cause he's still considered one of the eight full-timers, so. Yeah, come on, yeah, if somebody else wants to come up, Killian, again?
Yeah, just real quick, I think that really letting the voters decide, too. I think it's a big thing, whether you guys recommend it or not, like, totally whatever, but letting the people of Ware decide, not just letting it squash here in this room. I think that goes with any Warren article. I'm, I'm pretty open about, they put it on there and see what it does, obviously. If it's something like, you guys gotta sit on your heads during the meeting, obviously that's not feasible, and you can't do that.
That was the favor, is.
Yeah.
That might stay, no. Alright. Any other comments?
Was part of the concern that everyone has that he was just gonna be coming to the, I mean, he's openly said it'd have to go through a process, so, I mean.
Maybe his concern was this was a set salary, just on that you're, it's flexible to.
Frank?
Frank Campana, uh, looking ahead at this proposal, uh, I, I'm not gonna speak for or against it, but, um, going through these five percent pay raises, the, the articles, okay, so, uh, in twenty-four, uh, the forty weeks, five percent, I'm sure he'll, if he gets approved in March, he will get the five percent, or the per he or she get five percent. Another fifty-three hundred dollars. Uh, fifty, uh, twenty-five with a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, it, uh, just, just shy of seven thousand dollars, okay? The police chief already in the system with this year, a five percent, he's getting almost the same as the forty weeks for the, uh, police chief, for the fire chief, coincidentally. But the fire chief, the police chief will get fifty-three hundred dollars. Now, probably a lot of people in this room, or some people in this room, some people, taxpayers, that's, you know, chump change, but not to this guy, alright? So you're building in, you know, presumably, we're, we're setting the bar at five percent, because that's what the cops are getting for three years. Both, next three years, we're gonna be at a five percent level, and it just keeps building. It's spiraling up and up and up and up.
My opinion would be twenty-four. I don't think that position will get to five percent. We wouldn't even have that position hired.
We would not have the part-time position hired, if that's what the vo- will the voters would be.
Wouldn't have the full-time position, if it got voted in.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
So therefore that, it wouldn't get to five percent.
Wouldn't not for twenty-four.
Not for twenty-four.
No.
That would be the window you'd work in.
Right.
Right.
To get, to figure out where you're going, go what direction. Alright, so, anybody else on Article thirteen? Ford?
I'd like to, I think we should wait until we take over the, uh, fire department and then make a decision.
Um, I guess my question stands. March thirteenth, what's the makeup of the fire department gonna look like? Is it, are you gonna keep Mr. Rourke as acting chief and roll with it, or what's the plan? 'Cause we, we, and, and literally at that point, you'd be expending zero dollars from that part-time salary line.
I think if we were to make the decision to not include this Warren article, then there would be no uncertainty going into March thirteenth, and we would be able to start planning today.
Okay, I just, I'm just asking, 'cause it's, you know, it's a legitimate, I think it's a legitimate question, is, is, you know, if, if the Board of Fire was kind of put this together, I won't say hinging, but on this article, to, to make a decision, so.
Yeah, well, if, if this doesn't pass, then the part-time, then the part, the part-time fire chief is already, that's already been.
Yeah, they've already determined.
They've already determined that, that's gonna be me.
Okay, oh, alright, okay.
Right, yeah.
Alright.
So.
Part-time would exist.
So that would force your hand to retire at that point, if, if you want to accept the petition.
Correct, if I want to.
Or you could say, no, no thanks, I'll stay on the floor.
Stay on the floor and.
Keep contributing and make my money and fill my shifts and.
Right.
Okay. So, I guess there's a couple of different options passed there. So I just, again, as far as the article, I mean, I, I personally would like to see it go to the ballot, um, and at least go to deliberative. Um, for discussion, obviously, there's gonna be more people in that room hopefully than here. I'm not saying anything bad about anybody here, but, um, you know, and, but, that's up to this board. It sounds like we have three that wanna take it off and, and wait till next year, um, but I'm only one vote, so.
I don't ever remember. I could be wrong, but I'll never remember articles being removed at this level, I guess. That's where our recommendation or not recommendation comes from.
Okay.
So, I'm okay with it going on the ballot. Like you say, it could get removed completely by the public at deliberative.
Could be zeroed.
Just could be zeroed, right.
At the deliberative session.
But I guess, let me ask that.
How would you zero that out?
So you, you zero, so if you, if, and I guess I just wanna ask how it would go, so, if it's, if it, if you, if it's zeroed at deliberative, zero-dollar increase, but it's voted in the affir- but it's voted in the affirmative, there's enough yeses on it, that it votes in the affirmative, does a position change from part-time to full-time?
If I was a lawyer, I wouldn't sit here.
With, with no, with no monetary bump?
I don't know, you're going to have to ask that question.
You know, you know what I mean, that's, that'd be my question, if it passes.
Right, because when people make amendments to the articles, you always ask town council if it's a legitimate one or not.
Right.
And what the result is.
Yeah, because that, that would be the way I would interpret it, is the full-time position...
I don't, I don't really know.
Would, would be posted for the same money that the...
That would be a heck of a full-time position, you're going to advertise for free, work for free.
Well, it'd be the, it'd be whatever's in the, whatever's in the part-time wage line. Whatever's in that part-time fire chief wage line, would, would be the amount, and I don't think you get anybody.
Yeah, I don't think so.
No, not for that number, so.
That is, that is the problem.
That, that's the only question I have about that, is if it gets changed at the floor, what, what is, and it's voted in the affirmative. Right.
Well, that could go for any of the other ones we were talking about.
Because you, because you, because you can't...
But that's why, but that's why we have the prerogative to not put it on.
Because you can't change the intent of the article, right? So if it's voting the affirmative, the intent was to make a full-time fire chief, but you appropriate zero dollars for it. So really, on, theoretically, that first fire chief line becomes sixty-something thousand dollars for a full-time fire chief, good luck.
All right, I'm going to make it official, I'm going to move that we strike Article thirteen.
Okay, we have a motion from the board to strike Article thirteen from the warrant. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second, hang on, further discussion from the board. I will be voting negative for that, I think it should go to the voters, that's my discussion.
You're going to what?
Um, my discussion is, in fact, I think it should go to the voters, I don't think it should be removed, so. Any further discussion? All those in favor of striking the article from the warrant article, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, aye?
Aye.
Okay, Article thirteen's removed. Okay, move on to Article fourteen, need a full-time librarian position. Clay, do you want to come in, speak to it?
Okay. Oh, yeah, my name is Clay Creasy, I'm the library director. And, what, what, do you want me to read the article, or...
Nope, so just, just the, you're going to move it one position from part-time to full-time?
Yes, correct.
And that is for, what position's that?
The assistant director position.
Okay. Maybe if you want to take a seat, seat behind you there, where Mr. Wark would dispose, and see if there's any questions we have, that you have to answer. Anybody, uh, Tom, want to?
I just have a process question, I guess we'd call it, because it was a full-time director's position. So you're not establishing a new position, you're promoting a person within to that position. So I don't think this has to go on the warrant to promote somebody from a, uh, one position to another, when that position already existed, you're not creating a new position, so that's, that's my opinion.
Well, the, um, we, we do already have the position, um, yeah, and we already have a person in the position. I'm just moving her from, she's currently working, uh, thirty-two hours, she'll be going up to thirty-eight hours, and then get the benefits in addition to working thirty-eight hours a week, so.
So it's, it, I, I, I can see where you come from, Tom, but it's changing a part-time position we have into a full-time position. Yes, it's a promotion for the person, but it's still changing the intent of that position, I feel. Because there's going to be retirement and everything else with it.
But Clay has that money already, because you had a girl retire.
No.
Right, yeah, so, um, Thelma, yeah, right, yes, but she was, um, she was part-time as well. Yes, yeah, so this is making like...
So you have, so it'd be two non, non-contributing, non-retirement people, because they were part-time. Now he's trying to promote to a full-time position. So I think, I think it does require a warrant article, I feel it does, okay. Anybody else? Anybody else from the public, Neil? See, Rock and I see it a little bit, I figure you want to come up.
Uh, Neil Kirk, again, speaking for himself. Uh, this article and the Article seventeen, which uses the same language, um, is it seventeen, yeah? Needs to be changed. It doesn't tell voters what this position costs. It only says how much extra we're going to have to pay, um, for this year.
So you're looking for the total cost of the employee.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you're going to create a new position, you tell folks, we're creating a sixty-eight thousand dollar position, but for this year, it won't cost you sixty-eight thousand, because we already have a part-time position, which we're converting to the full-time position. The part-time position pays forty thousand, sixty-eight minus forty, twenty, twenty-eight thousand dollar tax impact. That voters can understand. But the way you've written it now, you don't tell anybody what the full cost is, and what it's going to be next year, in effect. You're just telling them what it is this year. Um, so I, I think it's, it's, um, it doesn't give the voters the information they need to make a good decision. That's on form, on substance, um, Clay didn't say anything about, um, uh, whether this is going to be a new position and advertised, uh, whether there are qualifications for this position, and whether, um, those qualifications are met by the current employee. It seems to me that, um, I, I don't know if that's part of the article, or if that's something that's an in-house decision, but I want to make sure that whoever's going to be the acting, uh, the assistant director is qualified to be director. Thank you.
I mean, I can say, I, she's qualified, I just don't, um, actually know, like, if you have any concerns, any reservations? I mean, I have the job description right here for assistant director, and I can read it for you.
Get, get back.
So...
If there's a job description, and the person who's going to re, go into the new position is, meets that job description, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
We're creating a new position, and to Neil's, Lori Davis.
Thank you.
To Neil's point, we're talking about adding insurance costs, we're talking about adding a full-time employee, that you could very easily handle adding more part-time employees. When you're creating a full-time job position in the public sector, you put it out to bid. And this is being done particularly for one employee, and I'm not saying this employee isn't competent, but I do not like the fact that we are not putting it out so everybody can see it. I do not like making custom jobs for a specific person, I don't think that's fair.
Um, if the person in question leaves the job, then this job description would stay, so it would be the same for the next person that we would hire.
So Clay, what's this person going to be earning yearly?
Do we know?
It's, uh, it's, uh, it's nineteen dollars an hour, I'm not, I don't have the numbers on me, it's how much it is yearly, though. It's approximately nineteen hour, again, I don't have the exact number on me, but...
Anybody else want to speak, Bill?
Yes, I, I, not so much what people are involved, I'm just more concerned about, uh, what's caused it, what changed to require a full-time employee, for somebody who was an assistant for a long period of time, uh, as a part-time employee. In other words, what scope of work at the library has changed, creates a need for the full-time employee, as opposed to maybe what Lori was referring to, of, of trying to give a person there a full-time position. I'm, I'm more concerned about scope of work.
What happened to, to drive this?
That causes the need for a full-time employee, regardless of the people who are there.
Understood, Clay?
Um, in the last year, we've, um, we had a record year at our library, as far as usage. We, um, we saw our circulations go up, that's how many books are checked out, seven percent. Uh, we had a forty-seven increase, percent increase in new library cardholders. We had a fourteen percent increase in people visiting. Our, uh, number of programs went up thirty-four percent, and our program attendance went up forty percent. So basically, our library has become a much busier place. It's, um, it's, so our organization is growing, as far as our patrons. We anticipate, hopefully, in the next, um, two to five years, maybe our building will expand as well. So it's just to meet the demands of our services and our organization. Um, I also want to see more specialization as well. Um, the person in question does spend a lot of time on, uh, covering, doing desk coverage, which is good and important work, but there are other duties that, for example, um, selecting new materials for adults and teens, I want to see more teen programming as well, as we do have a lot of, uh, persons, pre-teen and teen, coming into the library. And we also need more marketing as well, as we are doing more programming, and there's a higher demand for our programs, uh, we need to market these programs better. So those are some examples, as in addition to her regular duties that I would like to see. And we're talking about six hours a week, that's, that's going to increase. And I would also like to give more hours to a more deserving person in a more deserving position, a more professional position, than give it to another part-timer, who maybe doesn't have the experience that an assistant director does. Uh, and I, I have one more point, too, that, um, this is maybe an anecdote, but at, uh, Manchester, the Manchester Library was hiring a person just to be like head of circulation, which is considered maybe a, a step below an assistant director. Uh, they were offering sixty to seventy-five thousand dollars a year salary for that position. That's more than what I make, so, um, so again, that's also keeping up with, um, local, um, competition as far as job offerings.
Anybody else to Article fourteen? Board? Problem with it, um, we did have a suggestion to maybe change it, um, the verbiage to represent what the full, full...
But don't you have, don't you have, you guys have your opportunity to do the purpose, I don't understand.
No, I understand.
Every, every time, you guys have the opportunity to write the purpose, so you're going to totally confuse everybody with the additional, and then the yearly, and then we've, we've moved to how much it would be for an estimated annual. But whether we put out a separate handout at deliberative session, or whatever, to put on the website, I think we're kind of making these articles really convoluted for the person that's not here or listening. I mean, you guys have your opportunity, and you pay to put that mailer out. And there's a purpose statement for it.
I don't think it's convoluted to add a line at the end that says, this would bring the total cost of this position to X dollars.
It might suffice for this one, but it won't for another one. I mean, we just keep wanting to add the warrant, we want to keep adding and adding, and, and I'm okay with it, I'm just, we have to have some consistency.
I guess that's what I was trying to get to last week, and on the fire chief's position, is I'd like to see that word, whether it's in the article or in the, in the mailer, but almost to me, it'd be cleaner to have the total cost here, and then have all this written in the explanation.
But I guess there's, there's, there's certain things that have to be on there legally.
Raise and appropriate, because you already have this much money, so you raise and appropriate this much money.
It's, it's in addition to that, that, that line, um, but I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, it's just, again, you start, you can't really, there's so many things you can change, so many things you can't change.
I know, I know.
And putting out a, a different, even if it's not in the little mailer, you can always put up something as long as it's factual based, and you're not swaying anybody to vote one way or another. I think you can put up more information on your website.
Right.
I don't do Facebook, so...
Neil?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just read Article thirteen, Article seventeen, at the end it says, if this article is approved, this would become part of the annual operating budget with an estimated annual cost of fifty-two thousand and change. If you add that same language to Article fourteen...
It's already there. It already exists, that's what I'm saying, I don't understand.
Yeah, but it can't be twelve thousand dollars for the position.
It's the increases twelve, just like the increases fifty-two thousand. You're transitioning from part-time to full-time.
The fifty-two thousand is the annual cost of the bump, it's not the annual cost of the position in, in total.
They're written exactly the same.
That make sense?
No, it's not.
It does, it's certainly confusing.
I'd say, add a sentence at the end that says, this will bring the total cost of this position to X. And not cut anything out, leave what you have, it is an increase, appropriate money, and put it there.
So, in other words, in Article fourteen, the full, the full position cost for a year, I'm going to say is forty-five thousand dollars. That includes salary and benefits, that should be here. And I, I'm surprised that you're paying more than fifty-two thousand, eight hundred, fifty-three dollars under Article seventeen, as the annual full cost of that position.
With benefits.
It's more than that, no?
No, no, that includes the benefits that you're adding.
Got all the benefits, retirement, the taxes, insurance.
So if that's the case, how can the full-time cost under Article fourteen be only twelve thousand? That's less than she's making now.
You're adding six hours a week, where you're adding, where you're adding a whole bunch more hours at the building department.
Yeah, this is only six hours, the other one's turning it from twenty to forty.
Forty-five to forty.
Right.
And the building inspector's not at nineteen dollars an hour either.
Right, so there's a lot bigger sum.
The difference.
The building inspector's going to be paid more than fifty-two thousand, eight fifty-three a year.
I mean, we can add what Salem wants, I didn't write it down.
What you need to do is to give the full cost, so voters know this is a seventy-five thousand dollar position, if that's the cost, not a fifty-two thousand. And the full-time cost of the library position is not twelve thousand, but it's, I'm making up a number, forty-five. That's the information voters must have.
So, that's, I think, I think I'm going to cover that. We'll add this language at the end, proposing this here, uh, so this will bring the total cost of this position, or maybe we need to say, if this article is approved, the total cost of this position will become X.
Much more than fifty-two, and much more than twelve. Thank you.
And then reflect that also on seventeen.
Right.
Okay.
So you wrote, if approved, the total cost of the position will... Salem, you wrote, if approved, total cost of this position will become an X.
And, and maybe even more clearly, per year.
And whether or not that's salary, or salary plus benefits.
It'd be a total annual cost, right?
Yeah, I think total.
Total annual cost instead.
Okay. Gotcha.
Okay. All right, any further discussion on Article fourteen? Move on to Article fifteen. Uh, revol, uh, establishing a police revolving fund, um, this will put twenty-five percent of the cruiser detail fees will go into general fund, and seventy-five percent of the cruiser detail fees will be going into this fund. Um, it also includes, uh, grants, forfeitures, um, and seventy-five percent. This is to, um, allow, I guess there is, um, the way the current fund is set up is not exactly, um, correct, in the way that you would remove the funds. Funds can go in, but there's nothing saying how they come out. Maybe I'm wrong in saying that, but, um, so this would establish a fund that basically, the Board of Selectmen, upon recommendation of the chief, and approval of the chief and the board, um, to expenditure. I know you have a comment.
Me?
Yeah.
Why?
Because I heard it last week, about forfeitures.
Oh, you're right, man, I was, I was actually going to forget that.
Oh, oh, now look what I done, look what I done, oh, boy.
Man, thank you.
You know, you need, I got to say...
Yeah, about that, no, I was actually, I had another question first. Uh, so for the existing fund, the police special detail revolving fund, I guess there's a question for Beth. Uh, how, what is that allowed to be expended on right now?
And I guess the reasons why we're moving this way, if I didn't explain them correctly.
We're adding a fund. So the revolving fund is going to stay.
The what fund is going to stay?
Revolving fund will stay.
Which is, okay.
Which is paying for special details.
Okay.
Okay, so when the vendor, so when the officer works, the money comes out of the revolving fund. When we get paid by the vendor, it goes back into the revolving fund, it should net itself out. It's a revolving fund, it should net right out. Right now, we do have cruiser revenue fees going into it, which we can't take out right now. So this is the purpose of this fund.
Okay.
Is to be able to use those cruiser revenue fees, seventy-five percent of them go into this fund, twenty-five percent will go into the general fund.
So what becomes of the money that's in that current fund right now, that can't be used?
The revolving fund is just going to revolve, that's all it does, it's supposed to just net out.
So it's going to sit at, it's going to sit at a higher number?
At a small number.
Well, yeah, but you said...
But what about the cruiser money?
The cruiser money, it's already in there, where's that going?
Will that get rolled into this?
Yes.
I think that's in your cruiser article.
That's the cruiser article.
It's in the cruiser article, so it's going to get, it's going to get subtracted then, and then it'll become just a in-and-out account, okay?
And if I, if I understood correctly, it's the, the existing fund will be used for later.
To extract the existing cruiser fees.
Yes, like it is now, yeah. Wages, taxes, New Hampshire retirement system.
Yeah. Does it, well, it does, because it pulls.
Well, that's not, that's not the same as this.
This establishes a new fund.
I know, but, and my question is about the existing fund.
We're going to, we're going to, we're going to expend from the existing fund and bring it back to that net zero, because right now, it's, it's not net zeroing.
So will, will the cruiser take it to zero, take the existing fund to zero?
No, we'll have a small balance in there.
Just, just so it's in, that's an in-and-out account, that.
Yeah, that's fine.
We see the revolving fund, it has a balance of twenty-seven in it right now.
Twenty-seven thousand.
So we're going to take nineteen out, and then we'll leave about seven for the revolving fund.
All I'm going with, the only place I'm going with this is with the existing fund, I mean, it's got to be marked for what you can pay for out of that fund.
Okay.
And can we take the money out of it, instead of paying out of it? Because we're taking out of it and putting it in a different fund.
Yes, needs to go to legislative body to take money out of the revolving fund.
So, but, but the way I read fifteen, and I'm reading it now the way I think Salem is, is regardless of what the next, the, the warrant article for the police cruiser eighteen is, it states that all the money comes out of, all the money comes out of that, that's a police special detail revolving fund, right down to zero dollars, and goes in this new fund established.
Right.
The way I read it.
The existing cruiser fees.
Oh, sorry, twenty-five percent of that are in there.
Cruiser fees.
Existing cruiser fees.
Which totals to what after the nineteen thousand?
Good question. I can give you that.
That, I think that would be vital information, because we don't know what this, this fund's going to be on March fourteenth. I'll give you a day to make the fund, but, so, we don't know what's going to be on the fourteenth. How much money is going to be in that account at the end of that, at the end of the week, I'll say?
Okay.
Because we don't, because we're pulling nineteen thousand, we understand that.
Yep.
For, in that, Article eighteen.
But just the cruiser fee revenue that's been sitting in there.
Right, so you said it's going to leave us about seven thousand, but I think that there needs to be a, even if it says, you know, further to extract the existing cruiser fees in the amount of three thousand, four thousand, something, to go into this account. So we know exactly what's coming out of that account.
What if the cruiser doesn't pass?
Then, then only, then, all right, so what it, what it's, all right, so should we restructure it to say, "To leave amount in the, in there?"
Well, that's what I was going to bring to your attention when we get to the cruisers, what happened if this article don't pass? Because the, well, they're just taking it from the Everett Dam Patrols funds, okay?
Which are already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He didn't name this fund, okay.
So it doesn't matter.
So let you know how much cruiser revenue is in this fund.
Correct, the existing.
I mean, I was going to call out on eighteen, it says police detail account.
It does say that, yeah.
But which, I mean, is that the existing police special detail revolving fund?
Correct.
So it should be reflected the same, at minimum.
Yeah, I guess, can we, yeah, exactly.
Put the whole wording in there?
That language should be changed, right. But I think it, I think we should try and rewrite this, to say, "To extract the existing cruiser fund, cruiser fees from the police special revolving fund, to leave an amount." Not, not to take an amount, but to leave an amount, if you say it's seven thousand, four thousand, whatever it may be, but to leave it in there rather than.
I think we might need to be some certain on that.
Well, because what I'm thinking is, is, and obviously, we're going to have to have legal over into this.
Yes.
But Mike, but to Janice's point, if the car fails, now there's going to be a lot more money in there, rather than, it's going to be additional nineteen.
Nineteen thousand dollars more.
So.
Oh, yes.
Would we then move twenty-five thousand over if the number was four thousand? Or instead of just moving over four thousand, we still have nineteen thousand in this fund we can't touch? Or, not, not that can't touch, that we can't move over, can't roll over into the fund, because that's the way that this was, it was, the intent of this one was to roll those funds.
Correct.
E- even if the car doesn't pass into this new fund.
Yes.
Or, we talked about earlier, the order in of the articles, we put the police cruiser article first.
Yeah.
Then if the money's there, if the, if the money gets taken out, then we take whatever's remaining, if the money's not taken out, then we take all of it.
How do you write that into the Article fifteen?
You don't have to, because it's just order of operations. If, if we move the cruiser above fifteen, then whether it happens or not.
Is that the legal way?
No, I don't, I don't think that's the way that it legally works, so I know we just talked about that.
This all gets voted on the same day.
Right.
Right.
So it doesn't matter that the pecking order?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
It never has.
It absolutely does, like the NHMA training that we have available on this says that it does, and to be very careful in our position to put the articles in the right order.
That's a first, but that's okay.
It shouldn't.
Yeah, because we just talked about, given the five percent.
Right.
Increase ahead of the three-dollar deal.
Or whatever it may be, yeah.
Yeah, so if that's ahead, five percent goes first, and then.
Right, no, we did, you're right.
Yeah.
So then you would have this article state, if Article fourteen passes, then, would you actually write that?
I don't even need to have to.
We've done that before, too.
Okay. Because if it passes and the money's not there, you take whatever's left, if the article fails and the money is there, you take it and whatever would go.
And if both fail.
If they both fail, no money moves, and, and the, the fund's not established.
I'm sure this one, DRA in the town council.
Yeah, they'll, they'll weigh in, right, yeah.
I would propose that we move the cruiser before fifteen.
So we can move that up to thirteen.
Oh, we have several numbers to.
Right, I mean, these are, these are rough numbers, they're going to move anyways, we eliminated nine, but we can put it right before.
I'd like to see the police back-to-back, just so people are kind of in the same mindset.
Okay, so, yeah, so if we move the librarian up a spot and put.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Put that one in as fourteen.
Okay, makes sense. All right, revolving fund, oh, everybody's coming up.
Wow, it's a hot topic.
So the other thing, too, is, I guess maybe I'll clarify, is, this is above and beyond, the, the money that's generated, the seventy-five percent, is, what's generated is the, the, the people already paid for, as far as, as far as the, the officer, all his, all his, his or her benefits, salary, et cetera, has already been paid. That's not what's going in this fund. And then twenty-five percent of the cruiser detail fees for wear and tear, gas, tires, brakes, et cetera, will go back to the general fund. So none of that cost is coming from this account. Just want to make that clear, that's all.
Thank you, Neil Kirk. My concern is that the seventy-five percent is the right figure, whether it's eighty percent or sixty percent, somebody needs to check the chief to make sure that that's the right number, so that it's fair to the general fund and fair to the special fund.
Okay.
But the more important issue is one of who makes the decision on how to use this money.
Next page.
I'm used to seeing funds where that we set aside money in a separate fund, and then if somebody wants to expend from it, goes to the voters, like the fire truck or something like that. This seems to say that, that will be the case when it comes to police cruisers, because the last line says, "Use of these funds to offset the purchase of a cruiser must be approved at town meeting by the legislative body." But anything else coming out of this fund, guns, ammo, radios, vests, whatever, seems to be available to, with, without voter approval, but just with the Board of Selectmen and the police chief approval. And I didn't know this was possible, and so the question I have is, is that legal? And if it is legal, is that good policy for the town of Ware? Thank you.
So we did have discussion about that, we, we had discussion about purchases out of that fund, and one of the things that we had just talked about was the in-car ticket printers, e-ticket, and those came from the state, but if we had to purchase them, a purchase like that would come from said fund, this fund.
But it talks about the purpose of outfitting and maintaining vehicles.
The question is not, my question is not where the money is coming from, I understand it's coming from the fund. My question is, who has to approve the expenditure from the fund?
Right, that, that would be the board and the, and the chief.
And, and my question is, is that legal?
Okay, understood, understood.
Beth probably knows the answer to this.
Okay.
I have a lot of comments and questions, Lori Davis, regarding this article. Number one, we have a revolving fund that is expended in the fire department, it's the ambulance fund.
Uh, it's a special.
Special revenue fund, but it is expended by the voters, not by the Board of Selectmen, not by the head of the fire department, it's expended by the voters, the people who come up with the money. We have had capital reserve funds for different departments, which have been used and blown out, which is why we don't have them for highway and other departments at this point. The reason we initially had this revolving fund for the police department was to pay for the officers and the wear and tear on these vehicles. It should have been a wash, because in other towns I've lived in, when they use it, it clears out every year because it covers the maintenance on those vehicles. Now, there's wonderful language in here that says, "For the purpose of outfitting and maintaining police vehicles and other safety equipment as needed." That could be a helicopter, that could be a drone, that could be a bomb tank. Exactly who decides this, but more importantly, to Neil's point, the Board of Selectmen may get to ma, rule on the cruiser, but nothing else, this is taxpayer money, and the taxpayers are the people who should be raised, be voting on this. These kinds of accounts are extremely dangerous, because the people running these accounts, department heads, and if you get the wrong people on the Board of Selectmen, you can end up with some very strange expenditures. The reason we have the taxpayers voting on this is so that we make the decisions. We decide what we want, and it's not because today somebody wants a helicopter or a flying saucer, or they want a bomb disposal unit. The point is, we do not need this account. There is no reason for this account. If we want a cruiser, we put it on the warrant article, and the voters say yea or nay, and then the money is appropriated. This starts monkeying around, and this is getting awfully close to making sure we can get a cruiser without going through voter approval. That's extremely dangerous. We don't do that with the highway department, we don't do that with the fire department, that is not acceptable. We are doing everything we can with this article to subvert the ability of the voters to be in control of their destiny, their tax dollars, and their departments. Not a good idea, I'd like to see this gone.
Brent Dickinson, Dills Way. So, a few months ago, I was at a meeting, WRPD sought out a, a grant fund for a new cruiser, Tahoe, for a command vehicle. These guys know they have a limited resource in this town, they have to scrape to get maintenance fees. These guys, if I'm, unless I'm reading this wrong, they're going to create the monies that are put in this account. They're doing this so they don't have to bother the taxpayers much. These are funds that are available for their discretionary use. As far as a fear of how it's going to be used or possibly abused, that comes down to, do you trust your department heads? If you have a fear of the Board of Selectmen doing illegal unlawful things, then we need to talk about recall provisions. You either trust them to do their job, or you don't. If they're trying to raise funds because they can't get the revenue in this town, because the town's not doing anything collectively to increase revenue, then let them do it. They still have controls in place in the language currently.
Thanks.
Yep. Tom Close on Concord Stage Road, I think that's where I live. It's getting light, though. I know we have a revolving fund for recycling, or, or not the recycling, but the paid-for items at the transfer station in order to pay to get rid of them. Do we have other revolving, pardon me?
Park.
Parks and Rec, right. Okay, and those are very specific, really, as far as their use, so this is a little more general than, than that. The other question I had was, is this still going to be used for paying out the salaries and benefits for people, the police officers who are doing the details, or is that separated out from this now?
No, that comes out of the other.
Pardon me?
That comes out of the.
It'll still be part of this fund?
No.
The, the original fund.
The original fund.
The original fund will stand.
Yes.
This is a new fund.
Yes.
So the money for the salaries or wages for people who are doing the details will come out of the original fund.
Yes.
And this will be established specifically for other equipment, including things that are related to the cruisers, but if you want a cruiser itself, you have to go to the voters for it.
Because we're not circumventing the whole capital improvement process.
Right.
That's the reason for that statement being in there.
Right, but as this is written.
There's a process for that, and we're going to call that.
The smaller, the smaller materials, like radios or something, could come out of this with board approval, but.
Board and chief approval, yeah.
Chief, coming to the board of approval, okay. I just want to clarify, now I get a better understanding, because I think I was mixing up in my mind the existing fund and this one, thinking they were all melded into one.
No, you can think about it as having a, a labor bucket and a capital, not capital, but a equipment bucket.
Equipment bucket.
Equipment, yeah, not capital. Strike that.
Neil Kirk again. Am I correct that if this article were to fail, and the police chief next year wanted to get a cruiser, another cruiser, the cruiser article passes, this article fails? Next year, the chief wants another cruiser. He could still do next year what he's doing this year, dipping into this fund with a separate article, saying, "We're going to pay so much out of the fund," so he could continue to repeat that process.
I believe that is the correct statement.
Right, and then if he wanted radios, or helicopters, or whatever else Lori was talking about, he could put in the warrant article and say, "We're going to take so much out of this fund to cover the cost of that."
He could.
So, why is this article necessary?
So if he wants to buy a thousand-dollar printer, he's going to have to wait a year and hopefully it gets passed.
And you don't think there's an extra thousand dollars floating in his, in his budget this year, last year, and every year?
Just an example.
To cover the cost of that printer?
Just an example.
Just an example.
Tom?
Hi, Tom Flaherty, Sunrise Lane. Apologize for not seeing this earlier, but, because I've read this about ten times. It says RSA thirty-one ninety-five dash H, section C. That RSA is broken into three subsections, so it's, I think it should be thirty-one ninety-five dash H, one, C, just for clarity, if I'm reading it right. I would want an article to go up.
With the wrong RSA on it.
Mis-stating and opening up a door there. And I would also maybe read section C, and, I don't, I'm not a lawyer, but curious as to whether it actually fits or not, but I don't know if town councils weighed in on it.
Do you have, run it, is it long?
You want me to read it?
I mean, if it's, if it's short, yeah.
Uh, it's mod, it's not that long.
You said thirty-one dash HC?
So it's, it's thirty-one colon ninety-five dash H, one, C.
One, C.
Yeah, it just says C on here. Like, it's not that, it's like two sentences.
Go ahead.
Six, uh, section C, "Providing public service, safety services by municipal employees or volunteers outside of the ordinary detail of such persons, including but not limited to public safety services in connection with special events, highway construction, or other construction projects, or for any other public safety purpose deemed appropriate by the municipality." I think that's your open end, but it, it says, "Outside of the ordinary detail of such persons." I don't think it's printers, or, and, and this isn't worded, you know, this has other I don't think it's printers, or, and this isn't worded, you know, this has other safety equipment and vehicles, so, I don't know. I would just take a look at C and see if it makes sense or not.
If it fits, okay.
I didn't really notice earlier.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Frank?
Two things. I guess I'm probably a little bit too simple of a person, but the word extract, the existing cruisers, it sounds like they're working at a severe accident scene. How about putting in remove? Use the word remove, again, to satisfy a simple thing like me. I guess, in a sense, I'm not opposed to revenues offsetting, other than the fact that it takes away from any opportunity for the selectmen to use revenues to offset taxes, I guess. I know it's a little bit more than that, to that. But we're already losing revenue from the transfer station that people voted to, I don't know, I don't remember the percentage. Parks and Rec, recently, losing revenue from that, and I don't need to know the dollar an ounce, I... Conservation, some years back, started losing revenue from that. And now, we're gonna lose 75% of whatever he determines. You know, he, it could be up to him, he's getting, I think, he's saying twenty dollars an hour, it's been like that for a while, maybe since the inception. He might say, geez, now, I got this article here, you know, to generate revenue, I'm gonna charge you 150, eh, maybe 175, maybe $200 an hour, all right? Which might be unrealistic. You know, when they see the golden goose, they wanna get as much as they can. And the, the third line from the last, actually, the second line from the last, where it says, "Approval shall pay out only after approval of the Chief of Police and the Board of Selectmen." I remember the first night that he didn't speak to the, it was early presentation of the budget. He kinda made a blush statement that he was gonna have an article like this, and I probably should try to do my research and look for the minutes back then. But he wanted to be the only person to have a say to spend that revenue. And the Board, I think, Selectman Matthews, I think your position was still unfulfilled, or not filled. And there was a big go-around, and I think you kinda spearheaded it to say, you know, to include the selectmen. That would've been outrageous, to have one department, what other department has, had, would have that type of flexibility and use and control of a revenue source like that only to themselves. I don't think that anywhere else in the town. It may be, I don't know. So, he wanted that, but I'm wondering, that general language, it seems to me that, that there are funds, articles, and funds set that the Board of Selectmen, it appoints the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend. So, I would consider having that type of language. And I know I've heard that language before, Board of Selectmen, agents to expend. I'm pretty sure that that's in there. So, if that's, in fact, you know, the police chief, he can come to you and propose what he wants to propose, and now, he's got five people, you know, hopefully of all different mindsets, to listen to his proposal and to say yes or no.
Okay. Thank you.
Lori Davis. Something I think that should be considered is, we have not done this with any department in this town, and somebody said, "He needs a printer."
I would just use that as an example, Lori.
Okay.
I'm not saying that's what he would do.
That's not what this is.
Yeah.
This department is returning a lot of money this year. Now, you can say it's because we didn't have enough hires, whatever the deal is, but I have yet to see, any of the towns I've lived in, and currently it's where, not have money in some of these budgets at the end of the year, and they all find something to spend it on. That money belongs to the taxpayers, because if it wasn't expended on what the taxpayers originally voted on it for, it shouldn't become a free-for-all at the end of the year to go buy whatever you think you need now. And with this kind of fund, you are basically giving somebody a very clear pathway to put through things without running it through the taxpayers, a very particular department. You're not giving it to Highway, you're not giving it to Fire, you're giving it to Police, the department that has guns, the department that has a lot of vehicles. That's a very big give to one person. And that's either across the board to all our departments, which I don't think this town would stand for, or it shouldn't be for any department. The reason you have capital reserve funds is so you bring in money, and the voters vote to expend it. This is a very dangerous fund, and I do not know why you're entertaining it.
Anything else on 15?
We're gonna start forfeitures.
No, I don't. Not this late in the game.
All right. So, all I'd like to do, having thought about it some more, is I would propose amending it.
Okay.
And I know there wasn't a great deal of sympathy for this last time. Last time I talked about striking forfeitures, I would amend it to say, "Will come from grants, criminal forfeitures." So, excluding civil forfeitures.
I agree with that.
What would you do with civil forfeitures? Should we get any...
I still don't have an answer for you. I still would...
We don't have an answer today either, right?
For me, for me, it's about how, like, what are we encouraging departments with revolving funds to do? And I don't want to encourage them to go out and find ways to perform civil forfeitures. And so, I would, and, yeah, just to repeat...
Just to add that.
Add criminal.
Beth, can you tell me about the current Police Special Detail Revolving Fund? The money that goes into that only comes from Police Details?
Correct.
So, it is not something that we raise by taxation?
No, it is not.
No. And everything that goes in there is, anything that was raised from taxation is paid for out of that account?
Correct.
There you go.
Yeah, we get reimbursed from the vendor.
So, it's, in part, it's very similar to the annual billing. It's similar.
Yes.
And Beth, do you know that the 75% and 25% is accurate as far as, 25% will cover all the expenses of the cruiser?
Of the cruiser.
Fuel and maintenance and all that?
So, I went back and I figured out, right now, in that fund, there's $20,000 worth of cruiser revenue just sitting in that fund. So, out of the 27, $20,845 was cruiser revenue that we've received over the years.
Oh, it's just been sitting.
We took in $2,100 in cruiser revenue in '23.
How much?
$2,100. $2,100.
Can the audience keep it down, please? We're trying to understand here what's going on. Thank you.
So, it's $2,100 estimated annually they receive in cruiser revenue. So, it would be hard to say the wear and tear on the cruisers. $2,100 buck.
Really be enough.
I would think that would all have to go.
Yeah. It's probably, yeah, so it's probably closer to a, not a, it's probably more like a 70/30 or 60/40 type, probably. Yeah, 25 doesn't sound like enough.
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't, almost doesn't sound like enough.
Well, again, somebody has to correct me if I'm wrong. There is an aspect of this that is a tax impact. You have Fourth of July celebration, the cops are in detail, they get a little, they charge a little bit less of a rate than they would for EverSource, or the tree cutters. When they, when the cops go to the high school for games, it's a detail, they charge for that, and it's a little bit lesser of a rate.
Less.
I think the overall rate is like $60, $65 an hour for, you know, private vendors. They do like 60 bucks, you know? So, there is an aspect of a tax impact to it.
Yeah, Frank, my comment was only that it's not coming from our specific town taxes in the budget. That was my point, yeah.
Any else on 15? All right, move on to 16. Cable funds from the franchise agreement. So, this article allows us to take the $30,000 that Comcast is giving us as part of the franchise agreement and be placed into the Community Cable Access TV Fund, Capital Reserve Fund. Comments on 16? Neil?
Just a question. How is money removed from this fund?
Board of Selectmen.
I believe it was the Board.
Without voter approval?
No, regular capital reserve fund, just like all the others. It's a regular capital reserve fund, just like all the others.
And those funds can be spent without...
So, if there's some sort of needed upgrade that needs to be done upstairs, they would come to us with quotes, or we'd put out an RFP, and the Selectmen can...
So, voters don't approve that?
Correct.
Thank you.
Nope. Okay.
Just, going backwards very quickly on 15, I think it was Neil's comment about specifying the agents to expend...
Yep.
Of the new fund. Can we do that?
Yeah, I think that was Frank.
Frank, sorry. Just before we get away from it.
How would you wanna do that?
I don't know.
Voters to expend?
Agents to expend.
Agent.
Just add it in that second where it says, "Approval from Chief of Police and Board of Selectmen."
With the Board of Selectmen being the agents to expend.
Perfect.
I would, yeah, I almost get rid of the approval of the Chief of Police, just say, "Select Board's Agents to expend."
Right.
Well, it's still, it's still involved that other part, that other part of the...
Yeah, he's gotta bring it to us.
But he doesn't approve it.
Yeah, but otherwise, we could spend his money.
We could spend the money without, yeah.
No, you couldn't spend it without what it was for the purpose it was, the fund created.
Right, right, but we could say, "You need this," and he'd say, "No, I don't." We can still spend it.
Right.
So, I think you'd still want him on the, on it.
So, if you look at 24, we do a capital reserve fund for landfill cap, and it says, "Further name the Board of Selectmen as agent to expend from said fund."
There you go.
Great. Copy that over.
I think I put my foot in my mouth. Maybe better leave it like it is. I had no intentions at all of eliminating purchase of the police cruiser, must be approved at town meeting.
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
We're not eliminating that.
Oh, okay, all right. That was my intention.
We're just adding that, that it's the Chief of Police and the Board of Selectmen that are the agents to expend.
We added that in the higher line last week, actually.
It's the week, it's actually the line before that one.
Okay. We're not removing it.
Yeah, we're not removing the end of it.
I commented quite heavily to the Board.
Yeah.
You know, at times about, you know, voter approval, and that's right, and then, so I didn't want that to be eliminated.
Okay.
The rest of it...
Nope, it's not.
No, thank you for clarifying that, though.
We all set on 15?
Yep.
We're all set on 16.
We're all set on 16, too, yep. 17. Full-time building inspector. So, this takes the 25-hour-a-week position and pushes it to full-time. The two numbers represent the addition to the budget, I'm sure that the comment...
Yeah, we already covered that.
We already covered that.
Yep.
About adding the full-time to the end of it.
Yep.
Tom?
Tom Close, Concord Stage Road. Just a question first. Is the term "building inspector" interchangeable with "code enforcement officer"? Are we talking about the same position?
It's two separate roles, but it could be combined, yes.
Okay. You know, and again, this is an opinion, and I don't know if you could do anything with it or not, but when this article appeared a couple of years ago, it failed, and you were unable to hire a full-time person, where in fact, Chip Meany was full-time in exactly the same position, and the Board could've gone ahead and filled that position without putting it on the ballot, because it was not a new position. I don't know if it's too late to consider that, but in fact, you know, for years, we had a full-time building inspector, code enforcement officer. He also got a stipend separate from that in order to go to the land use meetings, Board of, excuse me, the planning board and the zoning board. So, that was an add-on, but he was a full-time employee as a building inspector slash code enforcement officer. So, you know, I hate to see you step right into the same thing again and not be able to fill the position, when in fact, I get legal opinions of whether we could fill the position, because we had always had a building inspector that was full-time.
But you reorganized back in 2009, when, when they appointed me to this position, Chip was also given the land use. So, then, when Chip left, we changed the land use back to full-time and the building part-time.
So, we did some shuffling.
We did some inter-office changing.
So, you changed, excuse me, I don't understand.
So, when I, when I used to be the land use coordinator and I was full-time, you appointed me here, and then we gave it to Chip as a part-time position on top of his building inspector.
Right.
Then, we reorganized the office and changed things around, and we made the land use coordinator the full-time position and the building inspector the part-time position.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah. It was a reorganization in 2009. That's why we tried in '21 to do this before.
Anybody else? Okay. Move on to the police cruiser. Appropriate $81,690 for a Chevrolet Tahoe 4i4, $19,000 be withdrawn from the police detail account, $16,000 to be removed from the Everett Dam patrols, which then puts the balance raised by taxation to $46,690.
And this will be moved to, in front of the next...
Yeah, it's gonna be moved up in front of the...
14.
Exactly, the other article. Comments from the Board? Comments from the public? Frank?
Well, it says to remove, use the word remove, that may be a better word to use in Article 15, keep it consistent. I mean, withdrawn, I'm sorry.
Withdrawn, yeah, okay.
Withdrawn.
Rather than, rather than remove, rather than extract, let's use withdrawn?
Perfect, thank you. Let me backtrack.
Okay.
But that's not my reason for being up here. That Everett Dam revenue, how does the town receive that, and where is it accounted for? How is it accounted?
That's the...
Where does it go?
I believe that's, is that the feds that pay us, or the state? I forget. It's a state, okay.
Well, okay, I guess I shouldn't, right. So, so when the town receives that, I'm not asking it as a quick question, but I'll try to answer it. Doesn't it go into the general fund?
Committed.
Pardon me?
Committed.
But it's committed funds when it goes into the general fund.
It's committed funds.
Okay. So, that, that amount of money can be withdrawn on its own?
Yes.
I would've, I would've thought the process would be go into...
A reserve, a fund somehow.
Right, and then, then you would offset, you know, say, taken from the general fund, to offset, you know?
Right.
Similar, similar to the next article coming up.
Beth, is it just earmarked in the general fund, or does it actually have its own fund?
No, you might be right on this. The Everett Dam Patrol funds might be too generic. The RA might say, "Where exactly is it coming from?" So, it is the committed balance of the general fund.
Okay.
Where it's gonna be coming from.
Okay.
So, they might like that wording better.
Okay. Okay.
So, wouldn't it be more appropriate to say, being offset from, $16,000 being offset from the general fund?
Committed.
Yeah, so his point was, he really wanted the voters to know that this money they earned through patrol.
Right, and I appreciate that, yeah. Okay, maybe...
But legally, it may have to be written differently, and that might have to be in the purpose. Right, might have to be in the purpose more than the, than the actual article itself.
All right, thanks.
Nope. Okay. Oh, Bill?
I just wanna refresh, I just wanna refresh myself. We did get a Tahoe by, fully paid for by a grant this year, correct?
Yes, for a command car.
I was gonna say, yeah, I wanted to know, so that's replacing what?
Car six, which was the Ford Explorer.
Okay. So, this, this would replace the transmission charger?
The one that has no, yeah, exactly, the one that has a blown transmission charger.
Okay.
Yep.
And if this were not approved, the impact would be, we'd be operating with basically the patrol vehicles that we have today, and that new Explorer, even though it's a command car, could be used for patrol in a pinch, correct?
If every unit was out of service, yes, it could be used for patrol. But the way the grant is written specifically, it's supposed to be a command vehicle, not not frontline patrol.
Okay.
So, it can't be rolled in there and say, "Every day, you're gonna use it."
But it can be backfilled in...
If it ever had to be, yes. The way that, the grant, the way I understood the grant to be. Now, with that, the chief has already stated that if, if this article fails, that the charger is going, he's gonna put a transmission in the charger.
Okay, that was my next question.
Which is about $4,000 to $5,000.
Right, right. Okay, that was my next question.
Anything else? Article 19. Yep.
Lisa Grillion, 232 Quaker Street. I'm not, I'm sorry, and this process is a little confusing for me, so I just wanna clarify something. Are all the warrant articles that could possibly be on the ballot open for discussion tonight?
Yes.
So, there couldn't possibly be any other warrant articles added after this evening, correct?
We can discuss them tonight.
So, the...
But, no, we... No, we, we can discuss them tonight.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's not, at the end of this, it's not closed door, no. It's not, it's not the fact that it's, it's, nothing can be removed, nothing can be added.
There, there are two date cutoffs that are important. Last Tuesday was the last day for petition articles.
Okay.
Public with a number of signatures. So, last Tuesday, that door closed, but this board has until the last Monday of January to make a final decision on what we want to put on the warrant, so.
Which is ill-advised because.
Right, and what we're eyeballing is next Monday.
It's ill-advised to go that, to that end because then DRA and the, and attorney can't weigh in on it.
Because I thought that there was, I thought that there was a cutoff, number one, and number two, at least one article tonight's been removed. So, if all of the articles weren't available tonight to be removed, that doesn't really seem fair. Do you see what I mean? If there's not a chance for something to be removed. And I'm asking, I'm saying this because we've already had at least three people who, because they have children and families and only came to speak to this one article that we heard was going to be on here, but isn't listed mysteriously. They had to leave, so now they're not here to discuss it. Does that make sense?
I suppose.
It does make sense, I just.
We don't want to be here this late either.
No, I know that, but I'm saying that you removed the one for the fire department.
Mm-hmm.
That was here, so that was fair. It was here, it was here on time.
Mm-hmm.
It met, it met all the requirements. People were sitting here waiting for one that now just, it isn't there, and it was discussed last week in a meeting. So, I don't understand how something could be added after. Yes.
Because I have the same question, why it wasn't on this paperwork?
It doesn't make sense. It doesn't seem fair.
Because didn't, you hadn't even seen it when you guys were at the meeting last. You guys went to the joint meeting on Wednesday, and it was developed at ten-thirty at night.
I thought we had.
I, I, the way that I understood it is we were going to consider to put it on. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't going to go on.
Sure, but that's like all of these. They're all being considered.
Right.
So, if you can delete one from tonight, and if that one's not being considered tonight to be on.
I was going to bring it up.
Okay. They left because they're like, it's not even here, so it should have its fair chance as a chopping block like everything else.
You could do it next Monday.
Yeah, we'll do it next Monday, sure. Yeah, next Monday.
But again, it's.
Understood. Understood. Okay, um, Article nineteen, ten-wheeler. Anybody have any comments on the ten-wheeler? This is to replace one of the trucks at the DPW. The, um, seventy-nine thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars was received by the state and is going to be a committed fund balance um, to help offset this pursuant to House Bill two. Um, that was part of, it could have gone in the road reconstruction to use for equipment, so we're going to use it for equipment. Um, so that remains two hundred thousand, two, two hundred thousand, two hundred and two dollars to be raised by, um, taxation, be placed in the capital reserve account. Comments?
Uh, the only other thing I would add is that we attempted to get a grant to cover more of this, and that grant did not come through.
The grant did not come through, right.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, we did, we did try for a grant and was, uh, we were denied, but, no, so the, the sev- the eighty thou- approximately eighty thousand dollars was received from the state, and that's going to be used to off, help offset it, so. Anybody want to speak? Okay, we'll put it on. Article nineteen, the state of bridge funds.
Twenty.
I'm sorry, twenty.
Getting late.
It's getting late. Um, twenty is a state bridge funds, um, uh, to be placed in the bridge reconstruction capital reserve fund. Again, this was a committed balance from, uh, House Bill two that the state provided. We accepted, just looking to push it into that fund. Comments, questions? Twenty-one, road reconstruction, six hundred thousand to be raised for road reconstruction, uh, approximately two hundred and eighty-four to be anticipated from the state highway block grant, which remains three hundred sixteen thousand for taxation raised. If the ra- if the town receives more, it'll be less taxation, if it receives less, it'll be a little more. It's always, it's always a, uh, best guess. Comments, concerns? Frank? No, you're all set? Okay, good. Okay, twenty-two, roadside mower, appropriate hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a new roadside mower. This will replace a nineteen ninety-five New Holland that's currently out of service. Frank?
Uh, this is, is a comment to this observation, uh, and I'm not indicating anybody is not being transparent or anything like that. I don't know how, well, I got an idea how you could reword it, but, uh, the way this reads is that we have a twenty-four-year-old machine, and anybody, anybody seeing that, say, yeah, time to replace it, you know, well-served, but the town has not had it for twenty-four years. The town has had it for. Find the minutes. Well, since two thousand.
Oh, shit. I don't remember what year it was.
I, I haven't. Now, now I'm wasting your time.
Probably about five years ago.
Eighteen, nineteen.
Two, two thou- yeah. Uh, May, two thousand nineteen.
Nineteen.
Uh, at that time, road agent, uh, Selectman Knapp, uh, uh, broached the, uh, requested of the board, uh, u- a used roadside mowing tractor for the town. Again, I'm not questioning, I, I think it's a, you know, it, it's a good spend to town to have their own. But, um, uh, twelve thousand dollars came from the roadside mowing line, uh, and he had to come up with another six, six grand, seven grand for twenty thousand dollars. But, uh, this here, again, I'm not dismissing it. Uh, if this purchase were made, it would not be expected to enter a rotation in the capital improvements plan, and the DPW plan would go back to renting one. I'm not advocating that, but that's what was stated at the time was, you know, easy to go back and Monday morning, morning quarterback. But again, you know, the, the, there has to be some distinction and some explanation that the town has not had this machine for twenty-four years. They've on, they've only had it for, since nineteen ninety-nine. In, in, I'm sorry, two thousand nineteen, and, and it, you know, went into the, you know, over the edge last year. And it, while the town owned that machine, they had to come up, they had to replace the mower, highway department had, again, correct me if I'm wrong. They had to replace the mower that it came with, with something that didn't seem to work very well. So, uh, I, I don't know, I mean, I was just playing, I don't have anything written out, but, uh, this would replace a nineteen ninety-five machine that the town purchased, used in two thousand nineteen, something along that lines. I mean, then you're really telling the people, you know, what it is. It, again, it's not, it's not misleading by, by, um, you know, by forethought, say, well, this, this must lead the public. Uh, it's just the way that it's written. Uh, I don't like it.
Yeah.
And there should be some way of saying it was a bought, used, uh, nineteen nineteen, and.
Now it's getting even older. Nineteen nineteen. I can say now it's getting even older.
All right.
Oh, I.
Out there on auto side or something.
Can I say it's getting late?
I think I had Hussey buggies back then, Frank.
Okay.
We get it.
We get it, we get it, twenty nineteen, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, anybody else? Um, I guess maybe we could change it to, this would replace the, um, used purchase.
The nineteen ninety-five New Holland mower, which was purchased in twenty nineteen.
Yeah, that would work.
Well, for complete transparency, maybe we should say that it's totally inoperable.
Or, I mean, does any kind of, does any of that explanation go in the warrant?
Not usually.
We could put all that expla- in the explanation.
In the purpose, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could, again, I agree, we could put purchased in twenty nineteen, that's not a big deal.
I was just going to add that the town purchased used in twenty nineteen at the end of that.
Yeah, exactly, but I think you can put the purpose, yeah, yeah. Okay. Twenty-three, trailer caddy. Shall the town raise an appropriate fifty-three thousand for the purchase of the trailer caddy, which will replace the eighty-eight Ford L eight thousand, um, that's currently being used to switch transfer station trailers? So, it does not require a CDL, it's battery-powered, it hauls, it can move the trailers around loaded or unloaded. Um, again, does not require a CDL, and that's where we're at. Frank?
My, my same rationale applies to this as far as the date. Uh, the town hasn't had it for thirty-six years. I have no idea when it was purchased. I'm sure it was purchased, used at the time, so again, my same rationale. Again, you don't have to necessarily, I mean, it'd be nice to have it in the article, but, you know, you can use it in the mail or two, and or.
Did we buy that, or did we acquire it?
We bought it.
Okay.
He replaced the plow truck that we put under there the first time.
Okay, all right, okay.
His alternative is he, we, you don't get them moved on Saturday, then you're, you're under the haulers.
Right, discretion, yeah.
Only question I ever asked Jay is employees he got there capable of using this one? So, I know they don't have the license to drive the truck, so.
Yeah, so if we were to purchase this item, um, there would be some training involved, um, but the one company that I spoke to, said that they would send somebody out to do some onsite training, um, so the option's there for that.
I just want to make sure this eliminated having to have someone on call on Saturdays to move the trailer.
Yes. So, my other question would be, I mean, we, I've seen pictures of other, of styles, and, you know, there's obviously a little bit different ones here and there, not a whole lot. Is this going to require the parking, the parking area down there to get upgraded because I just don't know if those wheels are going to handle it on the dirt, et cetera?
I think at the, at the most, a little bit of cold patch and a couple of potholes. I don't think it's in that bad a shape where that machine wouldn't go.
I'm just thinking, you know, forklifts can't go off in the dirt very well, and I'm sure this is probably going to be really no different with its wheels.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Most of it's paved now.
Concrete pad, and then the rest of it's paved. Like I said, there's a couple of potholes, but I don't think there's anything that.
And, and I don't allow a pose to upgrading that down there a little bit, and, you know, blowing the, blowing the, the hot box over it a couple of times, not opposed to that.
Yep.
I'm just asking, because that would result in more money needing to be spent, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Um, to upgrade, because all, all the pictures and videos I've seen have been on nice, nice, beautiful asphalt. Not off-road and or subpar asphalt, so.
Yeah, I don't think it's something that we can't deal with.
Okay.
We talked last week about ice and slush or whatever. Have you seen anything more about that?
We got a shed full of salt.
Like, it's a perfect solution, I think, if it's going to work.
Frank?
In the, in those conditions down there, and that's, I sure hope it will.
I guess my, my initial thought is I wish that we had, and Jason's already corrected us, um, I wish that we had a candidate that wanted to get their, their license and, and put this funding towards an actual tractor trailer, even if we could haul our own.
It was twenty years ago, and the voters didn't.
Well, that was twenty years ago.
No, I never, it, a lot, a lot of the time since.
Again, I'm just, I'm just thinking that, I mean, how much do we spend, how much we pay our vendor right now to move the stuff? It's got to be over sixty thousand dollars, right? So, we pay over sixty thousand dollars to move our, our own product, um, so.
Well, I, I agree, I mean, we've talked about it multiple times, it is, it wasn't supported very well, first of all, and that was when we had full staff with half of them being aid drivers.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd be a couple of you.
You have, you have two full unrestricted aid drivers down there now.
And if you, when you call them in, um, Jason, what are you paying them, three hours to come in?
Three hour man.
So, they're getting to.
Personnel policy.
They're getting paid twenty-five bucks an hour, costs seventy-five dollars to get them in.
Which is still a lot cheaper than having our vendor come out.
They're making more than that time and a half overtime.
Well, time and a half, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, that's just, the people are on call.
Right.
Uh, November fifteenth through April fifteenth, and I got to do it.
Right. Or, I got to do it. I've done it before. Um, I guess, I, I personally, I can't support this article, just because I don't feel is, is, I, I understand the pinch, but I think that the fifty-three thousand would be spent better, that's all. A- a- and, and, and not better, what I mean is, is more into the future. Get that, see if we can find an employee that would, you know, for the sixty thousand dollars, we could put another employee up there on the, you know, there's, there's, there's things to get moved around, I think, so I personally can't support this one.
I don't think you're going to find an aid driver for sixty thousand.
No, I'm not, not saying you would, but I think it, it could be a start into something that's that way, so. And plus, I'm just not so sure about the terrain and, and this thing working in the terrain, that's all, so.
We did ask last time if we found that it's not working in our environment, can we get our money back?
I don't have any clarification on that for you.
Is that something you could, think you could find out before next week?
I can try.
If they at least bid on them.
Yeah. Even, even if we're out twenty-five hundred bucks to borrow it, just to see if it's even something that will sustain, as long as we don't roll it over and break it.
If they want fifty-three grand, they ought to want them done on them.
I would like to think so.
Yeah.
But, all right, so, we'll, we'll put it through for now, I'm, I'm sure, but I just want to clarify, that's all.
And then I would further ask, since we've had him super late the last two, we maybe do that first.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Uh, his articles next time first, that's fine.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because we haven't had you super late here the last couple of meetings, yeah.
Yeah, three o'clock in the morning is going to come early.
Yeah, it is.
For me and Benji.
Frank? Four thirty for me.
I'd just like the board to know, uh, I spoke to Jason about this, uh, proposal when he first had it. I saw the video, it looked pretty good, while it was, the video was here, but, uh, back when it was first proposed, most people are familiar, at the end of eighty-nine, you cross the street and blue seal there, and they probably have a hundred trailers there, exaggerating. And all they have is a tug.
Yeah, it's with her.
And, okay, and I, I spoke to the, uh, person, at least in charge that day, and again, I mentioned it to Jason ahead of time, so I'm not putting any fault to him at all, but I asked him, I said, uh, do the guys have to have a CDL license? And he had to stop and think, and he hesitated, and he said, well, he says, I don't think so. So, I don't know if the guy had the answer or not. So, I mentioned that to Jason, and I, I don't know, I, I, I'm not sure if Jason followed up. I wouldn't know, it's not my purview to go to DOT and say, do they have to have it, you know, it's more from a town official, but again, I'm not criticizing Jason at all. But, uh, I, you know, it was a curiosity to me.
I think we, I think what we determined on that was that exit from the, from the transfer station that, that goes in front of the hopper, you know, where the truck is pointed out.
That there's traffic there.
It's considered a public way.
Okay, and he did, he did mention.
And on a public way.
Okay.
The, the laws apply.
I, I think he did mention that, but I, I didn't know if that was a firm judgment.
In, in blue seal, as long as they stay on their side of the white line, they're on their own property.
Yeah, they don't go open, they don't cross the street.
Correct.
Okay, all right, so that's a.
Yeah.
Firm determination that you, okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm. Any else? Article twenty-four, landfill cap. Shall the town establish landfill repair and maintenance capital reserve fund under provisions thirty-five-one for the purpose of funding the repairs and maintenance needed for the landfill cap and raise an appropriate sum of one hundred and fifty thousand to be placed in this fund? Uh, and further, the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend from this fund. So, we had an inspection done at the landfill behind the transfer station. Um, with all the excessive rain we've had over the past couple of years, the backside of it opened up a little bit. Um, so, to make said repairs, you can't just put any machine on there because of the way the cap is designed. So, you're talking about renting machines to get out there to make the repair. Um, there are companies that actually, you know, because there's a membrane on there that go out to repair them. Um, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, the companies go out there, repair it, put the, put dirt and everything back over it and cover it back up, but, um, that landfill is aging. We capped it in, what, eighty-nine-ish? So, it's aging, it's really had nothing but mowing done to it, and now it's.
Slipped once before.
The other side slipped.
The other side, the other side slipped before.
So, it, it slipped before, and we've really had no money to maintain it, and now this is establishing a fund to maintain it as it ages.
You pretty much nailed it. Um, the only thing I'd like to add is that the area that actually, um, the soil slipped off of the liner.
Oh.
That whole area has to be excavated, and, um, the liner will have to be inspected, make sure there's no rips in the liner. If there is, there'll have to be repairs done, and then they'll have to bring in the proper soil, um.
To cover it back over.
Yep, put, put the proper drainage, repair the drainage that's there. So, it's, it's quite a big project, and it, uh, it obviously needs to get done.
It requires money. Yeah, we're, we're forced by law to maintain our landfill, so.
Right, because it just didn't pass.
And this becomes a compliance issue, doesn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a serious issue.
Right.
Serious cost.
Anyone want to comment? Okay. Okay.
I guess my same thing, maybe it was answered and I don't remember, but I asked, what if it fails?
Then we can't put, well, yeah, then we can't.
Can we come up with money?
Yes, if we find money in the budget, because this puts it in a capital reserve fund. It do, it doesn't, it doesn't specifically appropriate.
You guys answered that before, okay. I know I asked it and I figured I got an answer, I figured it out.
Yep, fine. Okay, um, Article twenty-five, the site assessment plan. Show the town raise appropriate thirty-five thousand for conducting a site assessment plan for East Road. Property focused on feasibility of creating a recreational park that would house one more recreational venue. Hart, wanna speak?
Denise Purington, Parks and Rec. Um, again, I spoke last week. I guess I do wanna add a couple of little things on this one. So we did talk about the fact that, um, if, if, if there wasn't a Warren article that got approved for, um, going forward with that land, this would get pulled. However, since we spoke last week, there is an article that came forth by petition to put before the voters, um, to ask them to decide whether, how that land should be distributed. So at this point, there is some importance, a- again, I don't know if it's in the right order, but there is some importance, if that were to pass, then this would give us.
Petition articles always go last.
Okay, so, I guess my point is, we talked about at the last minute maybe pulling this, but now that there's a Warren article, um, by petition, asking the voters to decide. Should that land be set aside for conservation, or should it be set aside for use by athletic facilities? If that were to pass, then this would, article would be important. I do have a question, though, if, if that article were to pass, but this one were to fail, then can you do nothing? Then are you, are your hands tied to do anything?
I don't rightly know.
You could, I mean, you could not conduct a site assessment, right?
That's what I'm asking.
Right, which is what they wanna do as well.
So are.
Their article.
Yeah.
So it does no mean no, transfer over that article as well. I, I feel as it would, because you'd be spending money that was voted down to do something with that land, i- in a, in a plan form. I think it would be a no means no.
So then you'd have to wait a year to come back for
Correct.
A site assessment if.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
For both parties.
So, well, why for both parties?
It'll have to be redone.
It'd be a year.
Yeah, it's a year, you're gonna be doing it.
I think, I think it plays both sides. If there, if this one, if this one passes and the other one gets voted down, it's still money being spent.
If the other one gets voted down.
The only thing I can think of though is the funds, if, depending on the funds, no?
If the petition article gets voted down.
Well, the other thing is too is.
Then it gets a moot point, because we don't have the money.
The other thing is petition articles are advisory only. They're not binding.
That's not true. That's not true.
Some are, some aren't.
Alright, so what, where, where's this line the sand?
This particular one would be.
Where's the line the sand between a, a, a non-binding and binding?
Why would it be bind, why would it?
Because conservation by RSA gets to make that designation.
But I think we talked about that last week. If you had a Warren article asking the town to take that land and put it for recreation and twelve thousand to a hundred, uh, twelve hundred to a, you know, if twelve hundred people say yes. The, or overwhelming majority said yes, put it to recreation, and they chose not to.
Right, but, but not every, not every statute and law and everything can be superseded by a popular vote.
I know that, but that gives a guidance to the conservation.
Right, but that's all I would say, is this one is non-binding, you're, I mean, you're agreeing.
Yeah.
So this is, so twenty-nine is non-binding?
Right, like thirty would be binding. We can't, we can't just ignore, you know, reallocating funds.
But it, but I guess, alright, so that's my question, it's petition, they're both petition articles, how do you, how do you mer, merit one and not the other? I don't know, I'm asking, cause I don't know.
What are you talking, what do you mean?
So, so you said, you said, well, no, 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 you said that, that, that this is advisory only, twenty-nine, but yet thirty's binding, what, how, where's the line the sand?
Because how would this actually?
If I threw some RSAs in twenty-nine, would it be binding? I don't know.
If there were RSAs written to allow it to be binding, yeah, just like this one exists.
There's an RSA, if you look at the RSA seventy-nine, there's a specific law that specifically says you can buy, and they even dictate what the wording has to be, that the town can vote to, to do that. So I, I, I mean, again, I think thirty would be bind, cause the RSA says a town can vote.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're all saying the same thing.
So, alright, I, that's.
Now, what day did thirty come in?
They all came in by the ninth.
Cause there was another, there was another deadline about. I just, I don't, it's, it's probably fine, I just, we should double check, there's another deadline about petition articles that impact funds somehow. Uh, I'm just blanking on the details of it.
But if that date is different and wasn't published.
I think it's like the state, I mean, it's, it's, it is, like, it's all out there by state law, I don't.
So I guess let me ask a question. I'm gonna rewind back a year, just cause I, I'm now more confused than ever. In my eight and a half years sitting on this board. Last year, there was a petition article to pave, um, Orchard Pa, Orchard Hill and Appleway. If they put an RSA on there to the road standard of, of a class five pavement, would it have held weight, or it's still advisory?
I don't.
I don't know, I'm asking, that, that's, I guess, I don't, I, I'm, I'm very confused as where the line the sand is of, of a legally binding document, a petition article that, that was not put forward by the board of selectmen and not drafted by the board of selectmen, and a petition article that.
And that's, but, I think that's part of why these should be getting run by legal as well. And we're allowed to make minor, minor, minor edits to them for, like wording or whatever, that, uh.
It can be edits at the floor, too. Deliberate session, they could, they could make changes.
But, but ahead of time, we are allowed to make like typo fixes and stuff.
That's about it.
That's about it.
Yeah.
So will you be, cause I'll stay, even if it's till midnight again. Um, are you gonna be talking about petition articles tonight?
Yeah, it's part, it's part of the public hearing.
So tomorrow night, Parks and, so right now, we're asking that this stay. I do think last week when I was here, I did ask that at some point, the result of the, the letters that came from legal related to this would be made public, either read at a board meeting or somehow made public, and we've yet to do that. And I do think it's important that people know that, that legal did come forth and say there, that that land can be used for athletic fields, and I, I think that letter needs to be.
So there are two parts to that, one, I think we said we would do that this week, and I guess maybe this would have been a good spot to do that. But we also had the development of conservation saying, wait a minute, they did not have all the information, town council did not have all the information available to them to make a fully informed decision.
That's fine, but I still think the public needs to have access to the recommendations based on what she did have. And conservation needs, conservation needs to also, you know, what, what was the missing documentation?
Yep, um, uh, they mentioned one, it was a zoning variance that was specifically about the hayfields and how they were brought in. I, I'm trying to go off memory, so.
And there was also, I think, drawings of the hayfield, and it was to go in under an easement, and the easement was.
Because the lawyer, uh, mentions drawings in her letter, and that the drawings were incomplete and only showed the fire, the gravel pit.
No.
Well, I'm just saying that, that's why that letter has to be read.
Yeah, and, and all that to say.
Yep.
We still, for as long as we've been talking about this, we still don't have all the information.
Right. But it's, you know, at some point we have to make some decisions, so anyways.
I mean, it would have been my preference to delay this a year and finish getting all the information, but we got a petition article, so away we go. I think we, I think we are hurling ourselves headlong into making poor decisions again, which is how we got here in the first place. Which is how we get here, ourselves into so many situations over and over and over again, um, without taking the time to do some due diligence, um, but.
So I think a couple of things that I would say, and I don't disagree. It's unfortunate that, again, there were a number of people that were here that had to leave because they, of jobs or kids or things at home. In the opportunity to talk about the petition articles, the person, you know, who advanced the article. I think part of the concern is, while you're gathering all that information, if the conservation commission decides to go off and just, you know, that the town doesn't have a chance to weigh in. If there was a sense, I think, that we'll gather all that information, we'll take our time, but nothing will be done until it has a chance to come back before the public. I think that's part of the concern.
Okay, I, individually, I don't know how we were conveying any other sense than we're kind of plodding along, trying to take our time and do this correctly.
Well, it, it's, when you listen to the conservation committee meeting, it, you don't get that
Sure.
feeling, I guess. So anyways, I, right now, I'm asking to leave it. I do know that the, we're meeting tomorrow night, our meeting was delayed. Have an opportunity to talk about whether or not we bill in light of everything, we wanna keep it on there or take it off. Um, that's kinda where we are. And then I think when we get to the petition articles, I, I'll come back up and do those in a.
And maybe.
Can we make that letter at some point, that email or letter, available to the public? No, no?
That petition article thing just knocked me off my rocker, so I got nothing.
I think we have a lot of questions for legal, including the petition one.
Yeah, cause I, yeah. Alright, uh, twenty-five.
Lori Davis, I've sat on the conservation committee and I'm very familiar with the RSAs that govern the various things we do in this town. It is extremely dangerous to release information till you have all the information, because people get half the information and go running off with it. And then comes the facts and figures, and then you have a lot of grumpy people, but people have made decisions that is not based thoroughly, which is what we're talking about here. So it's very important that we don't make decisions till we get all the information, that's what Salem was alluding to. Number two, the conservation committee operates on a different set of rules. They're a very special, unique organization, and they have their own RSAs. And a lot of people don't understand that there are RSAs that govern them. And it is important for people, when they're talking about our conservation land and our conservation committee, that they need to familiarize themselves with how they are governed, how they are run, and how they do not have to necessarily follow everything that we do here.
I just wanted to answer that, and I do think, I do think that Parks and Rec have worked very hard to do that, to make sure we understand. But I also think, and we've talked about this a lot here, um, that there was an Warren article that passed, and there, there are things that are being said within that article that was not. And so there's a lot of clarification that needs to happen. It's not that anybody's trying to overwrite Conservation Commission, it's that we're trying to clarify that original Warren article. That's very clear, does not specify where any of this property has to be. So I think for the sake of Parks and Rec, um, we've tried very hard to do our homework, and work.
Brent Dickinson, Dills Way. Was Lori speaking as herself or as a member of the conservation committee?
She's not a conservation.
Yeah, she's, she's individual now.
Had been.
She has been.
Thank you for clarifying. I think, uh, any money that was spent to clarify any issue, that was spent with taxpayer money, I think that's subject to Freedom of Information Act. So I would suggest that anyone interested, file one of those, post haste, cause that's, it's our money. It's taxpayer money, ultimately it's ours, and we can get our answers.
Any else, twenty-five, Bill?
Yeah, just real quick. Yeah, I'm sure, but, well, I'm relatively sure, I just wanna make sure people are aware that when they're talking about that property, when you drive by that area and you look out and you see all the nice green fields, most of that area isn't out for towns, so I don't, I, I just wanna make sure they're looking at, it's only the, the only clear area right now that you'd be looking at is where the backfield is beyond where the, where the snowmobile trail goes through, which I'm not sure that's twelve acres.
No, that's only seven.
It, it's seven plus, it's seven, uh, going off the documentation that's written. It's seven plus, because it hasn't been officially surveyed. So there's at least seven plus acres of field land, and after a site walk-through, the board here was part of that walk-through.
Can I have you come up to the microphone, please?
Sure.
Sorry.
I'll share.
Sorry, Denise Purington, Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
Seven plus, it said, it states right in the documentation, seven plus acres of field land, and then there's the remaining part of the land. In the site walk-through, we also looked at a portion of the land that goes beyond the seven acres that has viability to be used in conjunction with what the recreation needs to do, including the possibility of, that's where a parking area could be, um, beyond that field land. So, again, hence the, at some point, if that land were to be allowed to be used for, for recreation, we're not talking about buildings and we're not talking about domes, we're talking about soccer fields and baseball fields. Um, that's why we had put in for a site assessment, somebody needs to come in and say, it's not seven plus, it's actually nine, or it's seven and a half. That's what we're trying to get, that part of the site assessment would be that clarification, and could you indeed even lay anything out on that?
And, uh, did you also look at Bolton, Bolton Field? I mean, Bolton, Bolton, the Bolton property is eighteen plus acres down there with not, not nearly.
Yeah, so we, so.
Most of that's unused.
Right.
I mean, it would require ex, some excavation, but.
Correct, so, um.
It's currently used for recreation.
I don't, I don't wanna get too far away from the intent of this article.
Right.
We're going down, we're going down rabbit hole.
We can speak to it at another time, but yes, we have one.
Okay. Any else, twenty-five? Further discussion later, Monday. Article twenty-six, Cypray, uh, ten thousand for a cemetery trust fund Cypray account. I'm gonna move, we amend this to twenty thousand. Um, we have projects inside the walls that need to be done, and ten thousand is gonna cover it. Got plenty of projects that need to be done, they've all been listed to us.
And how much do we have in Cypray?
How much is in Cypray account, do we know?
On that sheet she gave you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Look at that.
It was one hundred and forty-seven.
Hundred and fifty-four thousand.
Four eighty.
Huh?
Four eighty.
Alright, I'm gonna amend my motion to thirty thousand dollars to come from the cemetery improvements, uh, for, from the Cypray account.
We've talked about a lot of trees just this year.
A lot, and exactly, and that's just it, there's a lot of maintenance needs to be done, ten graining I cover.
A lot of cemeteries, I go, I guess I would defer somewhat to Sherry and Janice who looked at all the cemeteries.
Plus you got a hundred, almost a hundred and fifty headstones down.
Need repair, right.
Most, half of them are down.
I think, I think a thirty's gonna be a start to get things cleaned up to the start, to the point where maybe we can stop what we got going on and move forward with others.
I think there's also some fences that need to be repaired as well.
Right, but, but ten graining I cover any of it, so I, I wanna push it to thirty. There's plenty of money there.
Is, is there, is there a limit, that there was only ten thousand a year that we could take?
I don't remember, is there?
I think that's just an article that the cemetery trustees always gave you.
Oh, it was just that?
If there is a lot, then it is what it is, but, yeah, it's just always been ten, and that's, I think we've always ran it.
Somebody just needs to check.
But I think we put it to thirty, cause we get a lot of work needs to be done inside those.
Yeah.
So, um, so I made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Move in second, all of us in favor?
Yes.
Discussion on Article twenty-six is thirty thousand for the Cypray account for cemetery improvements within the walls. Moves on the war. Well, moves to deliberate session, excuse me, misquoted. Uh, Conservation Forester, twenty-five thousand dollars for contracted services, licensed forester for, um, uh, plan updates, harvest layout, harvest management, forest inventory, trail maintenance and development, invasive species control, and other services. And Conservation Commission is to contract or purchase materials, services for maintenance and upkeep of town forests. Appropriation comes out of the town forest account. Yeah?
Neil Kirk, another question of clarification, why is it?
Neil Kirk, another question of clarification, why is it that this account can only be used with voter approval? But the police account that you're proposing to establish can be used only with the selectman's approval? I don't understand why.
Might have been how it was set up originally, just like ambulance billing has to go to the town.
Yeah.
Sure it has to.
In other words, it's a choice?
I, I believe it's how it was established the first time it was set up.
Right, but at that time, there was a choice to make it either something that the town would have to vote on, or something that the select.
Yeah, it was all on how it was constructed, Neil, when they did them.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else with twenty-seven, the forester? Moves on. Alright, petition article for, to restrict eligibility, huh?
I, I was gonna inject there, before the petitions, uh, the one that conservation asked of us.
Okay, that we can discuss.
And we got it by email.
Is this the one Lisa was referring to?
I believe so.
I also saw Andy in the hallway just now. I don't know if you want him to come in and talk to it or not.
We're about to discuss the, uh, warrant article that conservation voted Wednesday to ask the board selectman to include on the warrant. And I've got it pulled up, I can read it. Uh, it was sent Thursday, eleven twenty-nine P M.
Which was, which was on the twelfth?
Uh, the eleventh.
Yeah.
On the paper here.
It's my question before we get super deep in all these petitions, since the petition is not for us to move or take off, is it?
This one's not a petition.
This one's not a petition. Well, that's one.
This is the one that those, everybody left for, because it wasn't on here.
So this is the first time the entire board's seeing it?
And I believe this is the one that Lisa asked about.
Yep, I believe it is.
And we said we would talk about next Monday.
Right.
Is there any money associated with this?
Andy Fulton, the chair of the conservation commission, uh, no tax impact.
Will there be any attorney's fees with it?
There certainly would, for completing an easement, conservation easement, there would be fees.
Does it need to be surveyed, too?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Alright, so there's, there's gonna be some, some money spent, there's gonna be money tied to it.
Right, not to be raised by taxation.
The attorney fees would be, right? I don't think so.
I think you have to, you're gonna have to ask legal if that's a legal way of using it.
Yeah, and the other thing is, too, is it doesn't, it doesn't have any, any avenue to spend that money. It just says any fees, um, but, where you're, you're talking that there's, could be, there's obviously gonna be surveying and legal and stuff like that, I mean, it sounds like legal fees cover, but the surveys, that's a, that's a service, I don't think that we covered on this.
There's gotta be something written up here, I mean, well, I don't care if it goes, you know, goes on like the voters vote, but there's one right above it that, that, um, I was getting late, Parks and Rec wanna do the same thing, and they've listed thirty-five thousand dollars for surveying.
Services, yeah.
Services. And with tax impact, and if it isn't, if it's gonna be asked to come out of the forest account, then it still would need that number, and it would just would say zero tax impact.
No, the, completing the easement could be funded out of the conservation fund.
Right, but there'd still be an amount that you'd put down.
No, we don't, we don't need town vote to determine an amount spent from conservation fund, to approve it. We're not saying town forest account, we're definitely not saying general fund. Funding would be through the conservation fund, which is at the discretion of the conservation commission. It's not a, not a general fund and expenditure, no, no pieces of it. And that's to write something that was not completed from ten years ago. And that, the article twenty-nine from ten years ago did not specify where any funding would come from, this is a correction on something that was incomplete as an article, and is certainly incomplete as a duty of the town to, uh, follow up with the approval from ten years ago. Get the job done. So conservation commission is proposing using our funds, town funds and the conservation commission to get the job done.
You're gonna, I think you have to ask Laura for the, or, or an attorney, you have to, for the mere fact of it talks about, um, said commission may acquire in the name of the town, subject to the approval of the local governing body, by purchase the fee. So we already own it, we're not purchasing. So they can spend conservation money to purchase and spend the fees that way, but how do you do it when you already own it? It's probably splitting hairs, but at the same
Where's that language?
Uh, Art thirty-six A four Roman one, I think it's the second sentence.
Well, how did, how have we done it before when we've put an easement on a piece of property?
It's done when you first purchase it.
Oh.
So when we didn't do our due diligence, now we're trying to close that loop ten years later.
Absolutely, it should, it should be reviewed by, by town attorney.
I don't, I'm not an attorney, right, they all have to be.
How many acres are there again, total, everything included?
Hundred and thirty-seven, I think.
I think it was a hundred and thirty-seven originally with the article. Hundred and seventeen was to be under an easement, and twenty was supposed to be between recreational fields and the athletic.
Gravel pit.
Gravel pit, mm.
So, the, the board of selectmen have been tasked with completing this easement for ten years. Various boards have not completed the easement. According to the language of Article twenty-nine, conservation commission with this article, whatever number that we are proposing, uh, is providing the voters approve it, adjusting and correcting some errors from that Article twenty-nine to get the job done. Which is to have the conservation easement completed on the function of the property.
I think that that definitely needs to be weighed in, because you can't change the intent of the article. And that's what I just heard. Was, you, you said that things need to be changed and, and fixed.
No, the, the intent was to put the easement on the property.
I understand that.
So, nothing is, is changing in that, we're putting the easement on the property, we're just offering the town the vehicle to get it done. We don't have to make expenditures out of the general fund, gonna have to raise additional monies.
I mean, we can put it on the warrant and have Laura look at it, but at the same time, there were our people that were here earlier tonight as they asked if we could put it on for next Monday night for the discussion.
I think we should put it on, and we'll talk about it again next Monday, but assume that it's gonna remain on.
Plan for Monday, then.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because we're gonna be here till midnight just talking about this. I, it's just a fact, unfortunately.
Yeah.
And we, and we've already put some other stuff on there.
Sticky issues.
I'm not saying it's not a big sticky issue, it doesn't draw, draw the attention, but.
Why, why did it not make the agenda for discussion tonight?
Because the board hadn't discussed it as a whole. So we want, I think we wanted to discuss as a whole to put it on there. And, huh?
I, I think, I mean, the, you asked.
The proposal came, came forward at a joint meeting, you guys.
I was under the impression at our joint meeting that the quorum we had, had given it a thumbs up to
What a.
show up for the public hearing.
I, I guess I didn't take it that way, because they, you hadn't even heard it, what it was.
Yeah, I, I didn't take it.
You guys stood there until seven something, and then their meeting went till ten thirty, when they brought it up at around ten o'clock.
They hadn't, they hadn't voted on it, it was just an idea.
You guys said it sounded good on the surface.
But that's the same way that the Board of Farwards gives us one that we haven't seen before, and it shows up on the paper.
Board of Farwards you've seen for months.
Yeah, this is, this is brand new.
We hadn't seen it, that's my point.
Right, we hadn't seen it, we, we had, we hadn't, the, the conservation commission at the time hadn't even voted on it.
But you said you.
We weren't in session.
That's my.
We, we had a discussion with you when you were in session.
Right, when we were in session.
If you had said at that point, there's absolutely no way we can do this, then there's no reason to draft something up and get it to you. But what I understood at that point was, okay, well, why don't you present it to us? So, I completed that, presented it to you, what was that, on Thursday? Agenda, I believe the agenda's put together on Friday.
And then we still would have had the option to strike it today with full public hearing input.
Absolutely, it does need legal evaluation, like they all do.
But I think, you already said to everybody else that left here that you would talk about it next Monday, so.
Right, and we can still.
You have the opportunity to do that, correct?
We can talk about it Monday.
But I think we should assume it's gonna be on there. And if we need to, we can strike it Monday.
I guess we'll have to call it a public hearing for that one article.
Yeah, we will. Absolutely, because the, the.
You have to put a public hearing two weeks out.
Well, uh, question was just whispered in my ear. Could we continue the public hearing just to finish out the balance of your public hearing next Monday night? And you could start at that number.
Call it continuation.
That's clever.
Yeah.
Not when you continue it here to a date certain, you don't need to.
Alright, so I think you have, we have to continue it.
If that's legal, sure.
So if you, if you wanna start at whatever this article is, and then hear the three petitions after as well, you could continue your public hearing till next Monday, do it at the beginning.
Uh-huh. That's fine, just be prepared to have a Mon, a meeting on Friday to finish the business we need to conduct, that's all. It's, 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 it's a, it's a hot topic, I'm not, I'm not trying to discredit it at all, it's just, it's gonna take a lot of the meeting.
Yep.
Between the petitions, this article, Article twenty-five, or whatever we're gonna, it's gonna, number's gonna have, so.
And I think it's a perfect example of why we need to be diligent, because if the previous board that set this in motion had been diligent and finished the job, we wouldn't even be here.
I, I'm gonna interrupt, I have an email that I could share with you in twenty-twenty, when I reminded people that it was not done.
Sure, great.
And, and so I tried.
Yeah.
It's not like I left it.
No, I'm saying that you didn't.
Off black.
I'm not saying that, I was just wondering, that was, what, two thousand thirteen?
That's the point of this article, is to get it done.
Why did it, why did it go from thirteen to twenty? That's seven years.
Why, why haven't we talked about the solid waste ordinance since March? Because everything else comes up and it gets pushed down the road. I mean, it, it's legit, right, that's exact, that's exactly what happens, it gets pushed down the road, it's, it is what it is.
Is it tired at eleven o'clock?
There you go, so that's why I said we're gonna have to have a meeting Friday.
Because right after the pandemic, I was cleaning up emails, and I reached out and said, hey, this is a good opportunity, and Brian from the Society for Protecting and护 Forest said he thought it was a dead issue, because no one ever got back to him.
Right.
So then, I forwarded the email, and at that point, it was left, but, let's move on.
Alright, I'm gonna move that we table the public hearing.
Continue.
Continue. Vote to continue the public hearing on Monday, to, to Monday, the twenty-second, same time, same place.
Seven P M? Or six-thirty P M?
Uh.
Let's, let's start at six-thirty.
Yeah, let's just get it out of the way, six-thirty, yeah, that's fine.
I'm, I'm assuming that you know that for a hundred percent.
As long as.
I would believe every, anybody in here.
No, as long as you table.
Everybody knows it's gonna be Neil that don't say.
Table something to a date certain.
Right.
If you say I'm gonna table it and then post it, then you have to go in the posting requirements.
Alright, so there's a motion on the floor, is it seconded?
Seconded.
Move in second, all those in favor? Yes, now what?
Who seconded, who seconded?
Salem did. Now what?
So, yeah.
Neil, Neil, so.
Neil, you're voting, sorry.
I moved to adjourn.
So do we, do we adjourn?
Yeah, that's all I had posted was after the.
But we actually adjourned.
Because the public hearing has been postponed, I mean, has been continued.
I just don't wanna, I just don't wanna screw it up by, like, breaking the.
Yeah, we don't, we, yeah, we, we still adjourn from this meeting.
You adjourned from the meeting, but you just continued, you never closed the public hearing.
Yeah, we never closed the public hearing. Uh, yeah, he did.
You didn't close the public hearing.
All fa, oh, sorry.
All favor, yes.
So, Benji made the motion to
Adjourn.
Adjourn.